Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the People's House. I'm councillor Catherine Pope, sitting in for Mayor Mike Little tonight, who had a scheduling conflict. So, welcome and thank you so much for coming out on this dark and stormy night. This public hearing is being convened pursuant to Section 464 of the Local Government Act and is being held in a hybrid meeting format, meaning there is a combination of in-person and electronic participation by some or all members of council, staff, and the public. We'll start off this meeting in a good way with a land acknowledgement. Councillor Hanson, please.
...and waters, specifically the Slaywithtooth, Squamish, and Musqueam, on whose unceded ancestral lands the District of North Vancouver is located. We value the opportunity to learn, share, and serve our community on these unceded lands.
Thank you. Because this is a public hearing, I have a bit of a script to read here. And so here it goes. The Chair has established the following rules for this hearing. Number one, following the staff and applicant presentations, we will go through the established speakers list. At the end of the speakers list, the Chair may call for any other speakers not on the speakers list. You will have five minutes to address council for the first time. Begin your remarks to council, please, by stating your name. After everyone who wishes to speak has spoken once, speakers will then be allowed one additional five-minute opportunity. Any additional presentations will only be allowed at the discretion of the Chair. Please do not repeat information from your previous presentations and ensure that your comments remain focused on the bylaws under consideration this evening. If you have provided a written submission, there is no need to read it, as it will have already been seen by council. You may summarize or briefly reiterate the highlights of your submission, but ensure your comments pertain to the bylaws under consideration at this hearing. Number six, all members of the audience are asked to be respectful of one another as diverse opinions are expressed. Council wishes to hear everyone's views in an open and impartial forum. Some important notes about public hearings. Council is here to listen to the public, not to debate the merits of the bylaws. Council may ask clarifying questions. The clerk has a binder containing documents and submissions related to the bylaws which council has received and which you are welcome to review. This is available on the table next to the door and pardon me, online at dnv.org/agenda. Everyone at the hearing will be provided an opportunity to speak. If necessary, we will continue the hearing on a second night. At the conclusion of the public input, council may request further information from staff, which may or may not require an extension of the hearing, or council may close the hearing, after which council should not receive further new information from the public. Finally, please note that this hearing is being held via Zoom and recorded in accordance with the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. And I know that councillors Myrie and councillor Forbes are joining us virtually tonight. With that, we will go to the introduction of the bylaws by Genevieve Lance, the corporate officer.
Thank you. Through the Chair, District of North Vancouver Official Community Plan Bylaw 79002011, Amendment Bylaw 8681, Amendment 54. Bylaw 8681 proposes to amend the OCP land use designation from the subject site from commercial residential mixed-use level 1, CRMU1, to a new commercial residential mixed-use level 4, CRMU4, and District of North Vancouver rezoning bylaw 1439, Bylaw 8682. Bylaw 8682 proposes to amend the district zoning bylaw by rezoning the site from tourist commercial zone 4, C4, to comprehensive development zone 150, CD150, for 1634 Capilano Road and comprehensive development zone 151, CD151, for 1748 Capilano Road. The CD150 and CD151 zones address permitted, conditional, and accessory uses and zoning provisions such as density setbacks, height building, building coverage, landscaping, and stormwater management, and parking, loading, and servicing requirements for each site.
Thank you very much. And now we'll start with staff presentation. Kam Singapi, Development Planner with the District of North Vancouver. Welcome.
Thank you very much, and good evening, everybody. And again, thank you for coming out tonight. So I just have a brief presentation. Let's see if it can be shared in a moment. It will pop up. Here we go. So, thank you. I'll just jump right in. So this presentation will present proposed bylaws, will outline the application, will provide the policy context, will speak to the public process that's taken place so far, and will take about 15 minutes, so I will try to be quick and concise. So first of all, the sites. This application is on two sites outlined here on this map with a yellow dash line. They are 1634 and 1748 Capilano Road. And the photos on the right show the existing hotels or motels, I suppose, that are on the sites today. So we have the Econo Lodge and the Best Restaurant. Looking at, using Google Earth to look kind of across the village centre, because again, we are in Lionsgate at the gateway to the community. We have Capilano Road running up the hill here, and we have the existing site, the proposed site, outlined in yellow. And for context, we have International Plaza at 25 stories off on the left. We have the Two Park West buildings at 23 and 19 stories, the Sentinel over in West Van at 26 stories, and the Cap West or Larko project where our community centre is with that tower at 12, approximately in line with this site. So turning to the proposal. The proposal is for a 170-room hotel. Approximately one-third of the site is for infrastructure improvements, and then the south portion of the site is for residential rental apartments, 478 apartments in total, 30 below-market units and 18 also below-market but operated by the YWCA units. In addition, both sites, both the residential component and the hotel component, will have ground-level commercial uses. Just giving you a kind of overview, here's a rendering of the site. We have Capilano Road running on the right. This is Maguire coming down in the foreground, and this is the proposed extension of Curling coming through. The hotel shown on the right and the residential on the left. So the bylaws tonight. The first bylaw is Bylaw 8681, which is an OCP amendment bylaw. This is proposing to amend the existing official community plan from the existing designation, which is commercial residential mixed-use level 1, or CRMU1, to a proposed commercial residential mixed-use, so same land uses, but at a higher density at level 4, CRMU4. In addition, tonight's public hearing is also for Bylaw 8682, which is a rezoning bylaw. This bylaw rezones the properties from the existing tourist commercial C4 zone that applies on both sites to two new zones. The hotel site at the north end would be a CD151 zone, or comprehensive development 151, which is primarily for the hotel use and associated commercial uses. The south side, or the residential site, would be CD150, and then again, that would be primarily for residential use with the associated commercial uses at grey level. In addition, part of the package that you may have seen in the report to council includes two associated housing agreement bylaws. They are not the subject of the public hearing, but they do support the package as housing agreements are a mechanism that allow us to secure in perpetuity the proportional below-market rates for both those 30 below-market units and for the 18 YWCA units. So turning now to the policy context. As many of you know, we worked together with the community on the Lower Capilano Marine Village Centre Implementation Plan. Quite a mouthful. We'll just call it the local plan from here on in. It was worked on and adopted by council in 2013. And just kind of zooming in on that plan, on the concept for the site. Here again, we have the site outlined in that dashed yellow line. And much of what is in the proposal is in keeping with that original 2013 plan, but I'll highlight where it's similar and also where it's different. So this plan did anticipate a potential hotel on this site and provided a density increase if a hotel was included. So in this case, we're seeing an application that is in keeping with that recommendation for hotel. It is in keeping with a density increase, albeit a much higher or a higher one. The proposal, the plan also included the extension of Curling Road and the realignment of Maguire. And again, those are asset aspects of the proposal that are in keeping with the plan. And it did include a recommendation or suggestion for residential tower approximately where the application is proposing to include a residential tower. What is different is the density. The original plan talked about a density increase of up to 3 FSR. The current application is for 4.4 FSR. And the height originally anticipated was for 18 stories instead of the proposed 37 stories. So what's changed since then? Well, a couple of things from the policy context. Perhaps, well, I'll start with the Rental and Affordable Housing Strategy, which was adopted in 2016. This housing strategy highlighted the need for rental housing in our community, the shortage that we have, and also the need for a diversity of housing affordability. This project succeeds in bringing us 100% rental building, purpose-built rental, with 10% of the units being below-market units. And again, that's the YWCA and what we're calling regular below-market. More recently, we also adopted the Economic Development Strategy. And this proposal that includes both the hotel and ground-level commercial and includes housing that is suitable for workers is in keeping with that economic development strategy. Last year, as part of the preliminary application process, the applicant opted to come to council for an early input session. So from that session, we heard several key items being discussed. There was a question with regard to the role of the crossroads, and we've subsequently seen Transportation bring a mini-study in about that connection through to Lionsgate Lane and how it need only be a pedestrian and bicycle connection now. There was a desire for the hotel component to be enlarged, and that has been done. There was a desire for an increase in below-market units, and that has also been done. A desire for sufficient visitor and customer parking, and the parking has been adjusted to improve the number of visitor and customer parking stalls. A desire to see a shadow analysis, and that will be part of this evening's presentation. And a concern that childcare not take away from commercial space, and childcare has been removed from this project. As part of the detailed application, the applicant also held a series of public engagement sessions or public information meetings. Three were in-person and three were virtual. And the last two were held this fall after the most recent set of changes and updates to the proposal. In total, there were 77 comments received, and they are part of the public hearing binder and part of the present package that was presented to council at first reading. Among the topics received in those inputs, there were several that were repeated, so I'll just mention them tonight. The first was from residents of the area who were really interested in seeing the town centre build out, who, many of whom are living there, delighted in what's happened so far, but eager to see more facilities and services provided. The second large chunk of comments were about the YWCA and were very supportive of the partnership that's being proposed with the YWCA and expressed a desire to see more affordable housing options. There was also a chunk of input related to rental housing and the value of having a rental housing and purpose-built rental at that provided. Many people also spoke of economic development and the benefits of having a hotel and the services the hotel provides. And then there were a mix of comments related to infrastructure. For those opposed to the project, they expressed desire to see infrastructure like bridges and schools completed before new development occur. And for those in favour of the project, they pointed to the infrastructure that is part of the proposals, the proposal, and will be discussed this evening. And then lastly, there were two interrelated comments with concerns related to the proposed density and the proposed height. So moving into the details of the application, as discussed, it has three components: the hotel, the infrastructure, and the residential. So the hotel. This is a rendering, and again, we have Capilano Road on the left, the extension of Curling on the right. You can see the 12-story element and then the ground-level commercial with a restaurant patio facing Curling. In plan view, again, we have that Capilano on the left, Curling at the bottom. You can see that there are a mix of uses, like hotels, dining rooms, the reception area, restaurant, all to help animate that street frontage. But then we have the functional drop-off zone, access to the parcade occurring from Maguire and accessing onto Curling. This heavy kind of vehicle-oriented zone is then buffered from, or pedestrians are buffered from it by a parquet at the corner. The second part of this project is the infrastructure component. This is an excerpt from that 2013 local plan, and this showing the road improvements that were desired. And this project is proposing to bring us three of those key components originally proposed. And here is again the outline of the proposal. You can see in red that extension of Curling, the extension of Maguire, and intersection improvements. Now I'll just turn to a large version of this. Intersection improvements that will allow traffic to flow through the site and down to Marine and down Maguire to Marine, and potentially turning left onto Marine to save on foods or to no data elementary. In total, these infrastructure improvements improve the network capacity, address safety, support transit, and support active transportation. And I also included this rendering just as a reminder to myself to say that in addition to the kind of engineering-type things, there are also beautification, streetscape things that actually help with the livability and the desirability of the neighbourhood. The third component of the project is the residential component. And here we see a rendering of the tower and stepping down to the residential area with Maguire being on the left and Curling Road extending through here. In plan view, again, we have Capilano Road with commercial units fronting Capilano, the main lobby for the building off of Curling, residential units animating the streetscape along Curling, the bicycle lobby on the Maguire side, and the vehicle access coming off of Maguire to a loading zone and a parcade below. In total, as noted, this project is a total of 478 units. 10% or 48 of those units are below-market, including the 30 below-market and the 18 YWCA units. This is an excerpt from the report to council, and I recognize this is a little bit hard to see. I especially didn't include the entire table. But really, what I'm getting at here is the below-market component, that 10% of the units provide a mix of rental rates for units that are below what you will see in market conditions. So for the ones in this darker shade of blue, they include the 10 studios and 21 beds that make up the 30 below-market units. You're seeing rental rates of approximately $1,520 per month in today's numbers. By comparison, the closest rental building is the Larko Cap West project, and their units are renting at about $2,700 for a one-bedroom, so a $600 difference. In addition to that, we have the YWCA units, which are a blend of rental rates from the very low $695 per month, which is the subsidy rate, to a mix of rates geared to income and to the low end of market, which is traditional. That blend is traditional for social housing projects. This will address an income range from $27,000 through to $86,000, depending on the unit size and rental rate of the particular unit. And that was just a highlight of one of the ads for local rents. One of the other questions we've had is around the impact of the height of this tower and the shadow analysis. So this is an excerpt of the shadow studies. This is from the summer, because we tend to enjoy our outdoors most in the summertime. And each of these diagrams is from a different time of day. So starting on the left, we have the morning shadows, where the sun is coming from the east, casting a shadow across Capilano Road and onto the commercial sites and the grouse in the site to the west. As we approach noon, the shadows shorten and are directed over Capilano Road. As the afternoon progresses, you can see the shadows are primarily on the subject site itself. And as we move into the evening, the shadows from the western towers are actually extending across this site. And you can see this site's shadows are adding to that and across the commercial properties and Marine Drive. Lastly, community benefits, and I know the applicant will be going into this. So I'll just very briefly touch on the highlights from a district's perspective and from our policy perspective. Firstly, that this is a rental building, 100% purpose-built rental building is incredibly important and not something we've seen built in past years. Very few rental projects get built, so this is a key one for our community. In addition, part of that building is below-market and using construction dollars only, not talking land value or anything like that. Then the YWCA component has a value of approximately $16 million, and the below-market component has a value of approximately $15 million. The difference, of course, is the YWCA units are larger, they're family-oriented, and the YWCA facility comes with outdoor play space, amenity space, and storage space. So there's more built into that. Again, we've talked a lot about the infrastructure, which has a value of approximately $9 million, and the public realm improvements, which will include pocket parks and plaza upgrades, has a value of approximately $1 million. So at this point, I will turn it over to the applicant for their presentation. So thank you. And I will just exit that and bring this up.
So next we have Mr Byron Chard from Chard Developments. Whenever you're ready.
Excellent. Thank you, Acting Mayor and Councillor, for considering this proposal this evening. I'm Byron Chard, President and CEO of Chard Development. I'm joined today by the project architect Hugh Coughlin, landscape architect Frank Brumpton, and traffic engineer Daniel Fung. The proposal includes 171-room hotel and 478 rental homes with 10% at below-market rates, which includes a partnership with the YWCA for 18 two- and three-bedroom homes for single-parent, female-led families. As someone who grew up on the North Shore and recently resided in Pemberton Heights, I understand the desire to create a connected Lionsgate Town Centre. This proposal is from years of collaboration between the community, district staff, and the project team. Thank you to everyone who has provided input. This illustration highlights the strategic and purposeful uses throughout the project. For example, the hotel features 10% of the rooms having kitchenettes for long-term stay guests and also a restaurant space with a south-facing, sun-exposed patio. This project complements and enhances the existing 15-minute neighbourhood by offering employment opportunities, retail shopping, rental homes, and active transportation around the site. Community-serving retail is a key aspect of this application. Chard is dedicated to creating a curated retail mix throughout our design, well-laid-out retail units, and complimentary signage to create a welcome retail experience. We have proven and accomplished this in our project at 15th and St George's in the city of North Vancouver, where OIB breakfast and Jordan sushi are located. The site is well-serviced with transit, including the rapid bus for easy mobility for an active workforce to live, work, and play on the North Shore. The site is also well-serviced with the transit for downtown commutes with a stop a block away. This council has been vocal that growth pays for growth. This project has embraced that philosophy. As outlined in the staff report, infrastructure upgrades are budgeted at $9 million, public realm enhancements at $1 million, development cost charges at $4.9 million, and affordable housing impacts at $31 million. This is a total community contribution of $45.9 million. This doesn't include the economic vitality the hotel will create for the local businesses and increased property tax burden, sorry, increased property tax from the rental billing and hotel. What should come first: infrastructure to support housing or housing to support the cost of infrastructure? With this application, you don't need to choose. We deliver both at the same time. Here's the current site and photos from Saturday. The pedestrian experience is uncomfortable with only a 1.3-metre sidewalk. Bikes share the road, reducing vehicle traffic to one lane when cars are passing, and there is no bus shelter. The existing hotels have 170 hotel rooms, which will be replaced one-to-one, and there are no residential tenants displaced with this application. The existing hotels will be deconstructed instead of demolished to reutilise the existing material instead of it going to landfill. The project provides land to create a public realm space that is equivalent to 34% of the existing site or six single-family homes. That is almost two times the size of the lot, which the district purchased for $9.1 million across the street at 1801 Capilano Road in 2022. With this dedication, Curling Road will be extended to Maguire to create a brand-new east-west connection. This will assist provide connectivity for the Lionsgate Town Centre to other parts of the district, such as visiting Save On Foods for grocery shopping. They will not need to go through the intersection of Capilano and Marine anymore to head this direction. Maguire will be expanded and connected from Capilano Road to Marine Drive. This will provide a secondary relief valve for residents going to the highway from Norget Park or people visiting the Lionsgate Community Recreation Centre and will not need to turn right at Capilano and Marine, again, taking cars away from this intersection. A raised, dedicated bike lane will be added on Capilano Road to remove bikes from the vehicle roadway, which will assist improving free-flowing traffic on Capilano Road. In addition, a separate bike lane will be incorporated on Maguire to further assist with active transportation to connect residents north and south without having to commute on the busy Capilano Road. Safety is significantly improved. Three intersections will be built for the district to program and synchronize as traffic demands change over time. The district will now have the flexibility to manage, to assist manage traffic better on Capilano Road. A new bus shelter will be built and a new bus lay-by for tourist buses. This will help support guests of the hotel to easily access the amazing local tourist attractions on the North Shore while not impacting the flow of traffic on Capilano Road. Green space with a pocket park, featuring a kid's play area, will be built on Curling and Maguire. The proposed also incorporates a significant increase in tree canopy and is expected to provide a net increase in the tree count compared to what is on site today. Public art will be installed on the corner of Curling and Capilano to insist act as a welcome symbol to the community. In addition to the transportation upgrades, this project not only replaces aging infrastructure, but upgrades it for future projects. This includes a new storm main, a new sanitary main, a new water main. Finally, the project also undergrounds all hydro lines and provides a vista switch, which will not only service this site, but will also service other parts of the neighbourhood. To assist illustrate the safety benefits of the public realm improvements, here are two sections from our plans. First on the left, this is as if we're standing on Capilano Road, looking back at the new Curling Road extension and the hotel property. You can see the restaurant patio, green space, a sidewalk, boulevard, and then the new road. The image on the right is looking up Capilano Road. As per the picture we showed earlier from Saturday, where the 1.3-metre sidewalk is direct- As per the picture we showed earlier from Saturday, where the 1.3-metre sidewalk is directly on the road, you will see that there is a raised 2-metre bike lane, a boulevard with mature trees and a 2.9-metre sidewalk. The pedestrian vehicle experience is significantly improved from safety, livability and enjoyment. Daniel Fung, Traffic Engineer at Bont, has been working in this neighbourhood for over 10 years. They have noted that since the preparation of the official community plan transportation studies in 2013 to the most recent traffic studies, the Capilano Road and Marine Drive intersections have seen similar vehicle counts during the peak hours. According to Bont, overall vehicle and active transportation capacity is added with the improvements we will be building. Most importantly, the site dedications and new roadways assist complete the official community plan intended network improvements. The south building will be a 478-purpose-built rental building designed to lead gold and net carbon-ready. Supplying more purpose-built rental in the district is vital to create a diverse and thriving community. Chard completed a rental building at 15th and St. George's in the city of North Vancouver in 2021. Of the initial tenants, 64% of the tenants were previously renters, which freed up other rental accommodation. Over 50% of the tenants were already residing in North Vancouver before they moved into our project. And another 25% were moving to the North Shore as they worked or had association to the North Shore, like a school. We would anticipate a similar profile in this building. The residential amenities have been designed on the uppermost levels. The podium level will provide a kid's playground and a dog run, as this building, of course, is pet-friendly. While the building will be providing a significant amount of rental accommodation, 10% of these homes will be below-market rates. Now, this gets me to the one aspect of the project that I'm most proud of, Chard's partnership with the YWCA. The YWCA will operate 18, 2 and 3-bedroom homes for single-female-led families. These homes will be designed to the same standard as all other homes and the residents will have full access to all amenities. The homes will be located on dedicated floors for safety and located on a floor, which also provides their own private indoor and outdoor amenity for the YWCA programs. We are designing truly an integrated community. The hotel has been designed net-carbon-ready and will be step code compliant. It will be tailored to a leisure and business market with larger rooms than would traditionally be seen downtown. We have designed the hotel based on a hotel operator, which tailors to the family leisure traveller with a pool for kids and free breakfast in the morning. The hotel will support the local economy and specifically the retailers in the lower Lionsgate community, given the significant increase in spending tourists provide on a nightly basis for residents. This will encourage new businesses in the area and ultimately create a positive economic engine for the local community, which will also support an increased tax base for the district. 10% of the rooms have been designed with kitchenettes for longer-term stay guests. Illustrated on the screen are the hotel floor plans, to give an example of a typical double-room queen with a couch or a one-bedroom unit with a kitchenette for longer-term stay guests. Chard has had many meetings with individuals at the Squamish Nation to better understand their development plans and to share about this project. Chard has been committed to integrating communities respectfully and complete studies, such as an archaeological study at the Squamish Nations of Crest. On the screen is the recently announced development plans and their lands. We look forward to continue our collaboration and maintaining open communication with the Squamish Nation to create a cohesive neighbourhood together. The vision for the Lionsgate Town Centre is welcoming and exciting. From our community engagement, we know the residents see the full vision that this community has to offer. This project delivers the missing puzzle piece and connects the town centre to east of Capilano Road. It is now time to deliver this project, build the rental homes, build the new infrastructure, provide the small businesses the benefit the hotel will bring and allow the YWCA to operate these family homes at rates deeply below market. I look forward to hearing from the public this evening on their feedback and thoughts on this proposal. I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chard. So a couple of housekeeping notes at this point. There's a reminder to virtual speakers that they will need to accept being a panelist to speak. Do I also advise them of this? Yeah. Oh, okay, good. All right. We will be taking questions from council shortly, but we'll start with speakers. And the first speaker that I have on my list is virtual. Doug McCandless. Are you there, Mr. McCandless?
Hello, Mr. McCandless. Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, please. You have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Little and members of council. My name is Doug McCandless. I'm the Director of Sales for the Capilano Suspension Bridge Park. Our group is in favour of Chard's proposal to include 171 new hotel rooms at the base of Capilano Road. These new hotel rooms are much needed to replace the region-wide shortage of available rooms. The closure of the Grouse Inn and the Travelodge's switch to social housing created a deficit of 137 rooms. Their loss was noted to our business. The proposed 171-room hotel is a great step forward for the North Shore as the Sherstone and the Econo Lodges have reached their end of their life. As a gateway to Capilano Suspension Bridge, the Salmon Hattery, Cleveland Dam and Grouse Mountain, this new hotel will provide much-needed, modern accommodation to support the local visitor economy. Additionally, by creating hotel rooms near key transits, this project supports international tourists, visitors from the lower mainland and local district residents, making it easier for everyone to access public transit and reducing traffic congestion. This thoughtful approach aligns with North Vancouver's commitment to sustainable growth by easing the pressure on existing infrastructure while enhancing the area's appeal. In conclusion, Capilano Suspension Bridge Park supports Chard's development, proposed hotel development project. The project addresses the need to maintain accommodation options for visitors. We are excited about the positive impact this development will have on both visitors and residents. Thank you for listening to our considerations and perspective.
Thank you, Mr. McCandless. And next I have Patrick Stafford Smith, who is virtual. Are you there?
Yes.
Patrick Stafford Smith.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
Great, great. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Patrick Stafford Smith. I'm the CEO of the North Vancouver Chamber of Commerce. And the North Vancouver Chamber supports the approval of this project by the District of North Vancouver Council based on the following key attributes that we believe support community needs in the right location. First off is the new housing, and this project provides much-needed range of housing units, unit options to the community. The property is close to the areas of employment and will support local businesses as both a potential home for employees and as customers for local retail and other service businesses. And related to the housing in particular, we're very encouraged by the YWCA units that will enable vulnerable families in our community to access safe and accessible housing in a location that's close to schools, employment, transit and other services and will really be, you know, support much-needed foundation for people who need it in our community. By investing in affordable housing, we can really help address this critical issue and ensure that the community remains inclusive and accessible to all. The North Vancouver Chamber has worked with YWC over the years with their employment services and are really pleased to see their involvement and support their great work in our community. The second point is the new hotel space investment. And this project provides new, and albeit some of this is really replacement hotel space, modern space, that is in great need in North Vancouver, especially as Airbnb rules have tightened and the supply of short-term stay options have been reduced. And we've heard this from businesses across the way that some of those short-term stay places were where actual business visitors for sales, service, support for our local businesses, that's where they stayed. But the hotel property close to areas of employment and housing will support visitors for a community for those business reasons that I'm mentioning. And I believe for the tourism, we just heard across North Vancouver, including the major attractions, but also the friends and family of members visiting and supporting local residents. And, you know, at the moment, we're hearing that people who want to stay in hotels, they're going to Vancouver and albeit reluctantly, taking transit or driving over to the North Shore. The third reason is the new office retail and commercial office space. This project includes new retail and commercial space and there is such a shortage right now of convenient office space for businesses needing or wanting to be close to retail services and key transportation corridors. And the increased foot traffic will stimulate the local businesses contributing to the vibrant and thriving community. And finally, the fourth reason, which really combines them all, but having this density close to jobs, to retail shopping and transportation corridors. This project is close to the Lionsgate Bridge, Marine Drive Shopping, Capilano Corridor and existing or planned transit corridors. And so it's the right location to support this density. We really need those public transit investments, but we're getting closer and closer to that. And we need to anticipate that to support the transit investment itself, but also to provide places where people can live where they don't need vehicles and they can rely on that transportation. So in summary, we're in support of this project for the new housing it provides, for the new hotel space it provides, for the new commercial and retail property it supplies. And we believe this is the density that we need in the right location. So thank you very much. We hope things go well today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stafford Smith. Next on the list, I have Haida. Sorry for the name mispronunciation. Haida Derraxion. Is Haida Derraxion in the house? No, we'll move on then. The next person I have on the list is Roger Dupuy, who is virtual, I believe. And we don't have him online, so we'll circle back. The next person I have on the list is John Clark. Hello, Mr. Clark. Make yourself comfortable and whenever you're ready, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is John Clark. I reside in Peters Road and I've lived on the North Shore for 25 years. So I feel like I have a good perspective on what's going on around here. I'm an architect, registered architect in B.C. So I feel like tonight was watching a bit of both a critique and feel it's almost like a being back in school. The one thing, just listening to Chard's presentation, is that I started seeing a checklist of all the things that they're telling us they're going to do. And as an architect, he's worked for over 20 years with very developers. I'm amazed that they're actually putting that much on the table. And the only conclusion I could come up with was that they definitely have some level of consciousness to improve our community. There's no other explanation for it because typical market projects like that, you don't do them to give things away. And so I think this is an unbelievable opportunity for this community to benefit from. And I don't think it's just generosity that's there, but I think it's a smart thing to do because that's how you grow a community. Communities don't just pop up in their own free will and you hope that with proper guidance and what we would professionally refer to as urban planning, you got to be visionary. You have to be able to look ahead. They're simply just looking ahead at the reality that we can't afford low-density anymore in the district. And I've watched the district change over the last 25 years a lot. And it hasn't moved in that area of density. And I almost feel like there's this boogeyman in the room and it's a height. 37, 38 stories. Has anybody from the district, you know, lately to look at Brentwood, Brentwood Town Centre, Metro Town Centre? Those are 52-story towers, 50-story towers, 40-story towers. Their planning is quite good and it serves the community well. Burnaby has one of the highest tax coffers, I think, of any of the lower municipalities. And they're putting their money back into the community. So listening to Chard go through their list, you know, I just started making a little checklist here and it's a designer's dream to have a client walk to the door and say, "Yeah, we're going to take care of all the civil issues. We're going to take care of creating an articulated tower scheme. We're going to be able to implement cost balancing. We're going to provide all these rentals." I've never heard of a developer providing that kind of rental space. Deciding the way they've laid it out, excellent, transit improvements, jobs, hydro improvements. B.C. High School, so hard to get those guys to do anything. This is going to change the smarts which you are referring to, benefits the whole community, it's not just their project. Nobody else can pay for it. So I think, you know, storming, even the lead gold and doing step code. That means they're going to be putting a triple paint class on this building. That's unprecedented. Who would develop or wants to do that? So I would venture to say to council, fear not. The OCPs are meant to be changed. That's why they're there. They're a tool to see vision. They're a tool to enable you to midstream, change your mind or improve it. But they're not something you should fear. It's something you should embrace. And I'll just conclude by saying, and that's not foregoing the fact that Mayor and Council, you know, are very appreciative of what they've done in this district of being stewards of our community. And I hope, I know I can walk away from my comments with a clear conscience. I think council and mayor can do the same in terms of admitting that OCP. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. Next, I have in-person, Nader Malak Yasty. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council, for your time this evening. My name is Nader. I've been a North Shore resident my entire life. And I just wanted to come here tonight and express my support for this project. I've, over the years, living on the North Shore, driven past the Lionsgate Village and up Capilano Road through Marine Drive quite a bit. It's a nice neighbourhood and I think it has potential to be a lot nicer. And I believe that this development is a positive, is going to provide a positive impact to making the Lionsgate Village a much nicer community. I think it kind of goes without saying that the increased density the developer is asking for, in my opinion, is warranted because we are obviously in a housing crisis and that's been stated quite a bit on a municipal, provincial and federal level. We have one of the lowest residential vacancy rates in Canada and I think we definitely need to inject more supply into our various municipalities. Also, the developer is quite an established landlord already. And they, I think if I was living in the neighbourhood myself, I would probably prefer to have an established, reputable landlord that has managed buildings in the past instead of a strata council that maybe you don't know who you're going to get on that council. I think an established landlord would be a lot more. maybe you don't know who you're gonna get on that council. I think an established landlord would be a lot more neighborly and kinder to the neighborhood than potentially a strata council could be. So I think that's the benefit of having of having a rental building. It was talked about quite a bit in the presentations. I won't touch on it too much, but there's plenty of off-site improvements. The building is quite well-designed, and I believe it's visually very pleasing. So I think I just believe that in the Lions Gate Village has had quite a bit of beautiful projects in the last five to eight years. And this development will probably be the most significant impact to date in the Lions Gate Village. So that is why I came here tonight to support the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming and for your comments. Next, I have Dennis Innis, in-person or virtual?
Virtual. Yeah.
Can you hear us?
I can hear. Yes, I can hear. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you clearly. Go ahead, please.
Good, thank you. Oh, good evening, Madam Chair and Council. So my name is Dennis Innis, and I'm speaking in my capacity as a board member for of the Tourism Industry Association of B.C. or TIA B.C. So on behalf of our board and a membership, I have tuned into tonight's proceedings to express TIA B.C.'s support for Charge's proposal to build the new rental housing and renew the aging hotel rooms at the base of Capilano Road in North Vancouver. So this project, subject to your approval, would renew the hotel supply on the North Shore, which supports, as we have heard, the local tourism economy and of course, which the local tourism economy, which is an economic driver of the district. And it will deliver close to 500 desperately needed rental homes, which will enhance the housing opportunities for North Shore workforce, which today I believe is made up mostly of commuters. And all this is possible with zero residential tenant displacement, which we think is a very strong point. So as the voice of B.C.'s $18.5 billion tourist I A B.C. recognizes the value this project will bring to our region's visitors and tourism economy. So the North Shore has a critical need for new hotel capacity, especially as the number of hotel rooms across the region has declined in recent years, limiting our competitiveness and threatening potential tourism revenue as well. So the economic impact of this project is substantial. Once operational, the hotel is expected to contribute 11.8 million in GDP annually alongside 1.5 million in additional tourism spending, per a total of 23.3 million each year. So the project will also create over 400 jobs in hotel operations, hospitality and support services, strengthening the tourism workforce and providing more local employment and opportunities, which directly aligns with our industry's growth priorities. Also, there's Capilano University on the North Shore. They have a tourism program, and the students have a work-integrated learning experience. So it's an opportunity for students to get experience in the industry and then possibly work in the hotel upon graduation. Furthermore, it'll provide living opportunities for those working in the hotel and rental components through the residential building on site, reducing commutes and elevating some pressure on the traffic congestion across the Lions Gate Bridge. As a cyclist, I have to say that that section of road from Marine Drive up Capilano past the hotels is a brutal bit of riding. So it's very good to hear that there's improvement in that as well. The project will contribute positively to Lions Gate Village, which marks the gateway to the District of North Vancouver, while also delivering new hotel rooms, secured rental and below-market rental housing, transportation infrastructure improvements, and other public benefits. So once again, TIA B.C. supports this project, and we hope council will allow it to proceed, recognizing the many benefits it stands to deliver. And thank you very much for the opportunity to comment tonight.
Comments, Mr. Innis. Next, I have on the list is Janet Burgess. In-person Janet Burgess. Hello. Make yourself comfortable. Whenever you're ready to go, you have five minutes.
Hey, thank you.
Oh, stand by for a moment, please. Did we lose Counselor Murray? Is she? Okay. You can proceed. Okay. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Please go ahead. Great, thank you. My name's Janet Burgess, and I'm here as a resident of the district with some lived experience from a business perspective that I'd like to share. So thanks for giving me the opportunity. I'm in support of this project and will provide a little bit of color in terms of the impacts of not having sufficient affordable housing on the North Shore. Personally, I can speak to affordability challenges from a couple perspectives. I worked at Blue Shore Financial Credit Union for over 30 years, right through to the end of 2023. Blue Shore branches are primarily located on the North Shore with a handful of branches off the shore. During my time there, I managed HR, including overseeing recruitment, spent the last 10 years directly overseeing the branch locations with in-person staff across the North Shore. The first challenge was retention of staff who moved off the shore due to lack of affordable housing and were unwilling to braid the commute to remain working on the shore. North Shore traffic issues are well-known across the Lower Mainland and are a major deterrent. The other challenge was attracting candidates for North Shore branch-based positions. As many of those roles are entry-to-mid-level professional branch positions, they tend to attract younger adults who wish to progress their careers in the financial services field, and they are most often the ones who cannot afford to live on the shore. As cost of housing has increased, applicants for North Shore-based roles has decreased, becoming a serious challenge for many businesses on the shore. While affordability and traffic seem tied together in these examples, the root cause is without question affordability. Luckily, I bought my North Van District house at a very opportune time in my life. Had I not been able to afford to rent on the North Shore when I needed it, I wouldn't be here now. Unfortunately, my daughter, who's likely to leave the nest in the next few years as she completes her graduate studies, is already quite certain she'll never be able to afford to remain on the North Shore. If the dream is to have thriving North Shore businesses employing local talent to sustain healthy, multi-generational communities, we need to prioritize affordable housing options, which is exactly what this project aims to accomplish. I support it and think we need lots more of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next, I have Jordan Williams, in-person. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Council members, my name is Jordan Williams, and I am a resident of Belle Isle, which is across the street from this application. I attended the public information meeting hosted by the applicant, and I'm generally in support of what's being proposed. I've lived in the Lions Gate Village since 2022 and was amongst the first wave of people to move in. When I moved to the neighborhood, I understood that the planned new housing and neighborhood amenities would take time to build. Perhaps I didn't anticipate that this particular project would take over nine years. However, I am looking forward to seeing this property renewed with new housing and a modernized hotel. The redevelopment of the eastern side of Capilano Road will truly round out the Lions Gate Village into becoming a great community on the North Shore. As an immediate neighbor, I'm happy that Charge's plans for this site includes new retail, including space designed to accommodate a restaurant in the hotel, which would be a welcome amenity for the neighborhood. Furthermore, the additional residents of this development will support nearby businesses, including the Park West Retail across the street, which is pretty slow to activate, and it will in general create a lot more vibrancy in the neighborhood. In consideration of the broader housing context, as our community continues to grow as it's expected to, we need these new units, housing units, to get built. Being near frequent transit and services, the Lions Gate Village is an appropriate location for added density to accommodate future growth. As a downtown worker myself, living in this area, I rely entirely on transit and bicycle to get into work every day. And finally, I would like to comment on the planned transportation improvements associated with this development. I am supportive of the curling road extension, which will unlock a new transportation artery for vehicles traveling east and take pressure off the Marine-Capilano intersection. This new route will be a game changer for Lions Gate residents and other commuters north of Marine Drive to take the Second Arrow's Bridge to get to work. Thank you for listening to my comments. I hope this project gets approved.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams. Next, I have someone on the phone, Dawn Peters. Do we have Mr. Peters on the line? Mr. Peters, can you press star six to join us? If you can hear us, or that's to unmute. We have you on the line, but we're not hearing you. Again, Mr. Peters, can you, if you can hear us, push star six?
Can you hear me yet?
We can hear you now.
Oh, good. Okay.
Great. Welcome. You have five minutes.
Thank you very much. Good evening, your worship and council. My name is Dawn Peters. I'm a longtime district resident and former chair of the Community Housing Action Committee. While I'm no longer with the, with CHAC, the Community Housing Action Committee, I continue to be keenly interested in the provision of affordable housing here on the North Shore and I beg your pardon here in the district. Early in the history of this particular project, and in the early days of my tenure at CHAC, probably in 2014, 2015, I spoke at the public hearing at this council chamber and argued for including some affordability in the project, but to no avail. Ironically, within several years, both my sons announced to us that they had to move away from the District of North Van to another community in B.C. where they could afford to raise their families. Both sons. It was a painful lesson, let me tell you. As they left, they took with them all their history here in the district, their friendships, their part-time summer work, local school and post-secondary associations, and their family memories. Now they live on the island and in the interior, where both now are putting down roots. As I said, the irony is painful to this day. Over the last dozen or so years, I have spoken to many people facing the same painful reality. And to this day, it continues to remind me of the critical importance of standing up for housing affordability of all kinds, not just for families like mine, but also for that growing number of people who, excuse me, who simply cannot buy here. They must rent. They must share. They must forego building family, cannot own a car, and must simply move away. As we know only too well, affordability is growing painfully elusive and must be seized wherever we can do so. This project in Lower Capilano responds to the need for affordability with its many features and presents an opportunity to become a real walkable community with its 430 market rentals and especially with the 48 below-market YMCA-managed family rentals. And perhaps more critically, with transit to just about everywhere, from Deep Cove to the Seabus to Horseshoe Bay to beaches, shopping, and the nearby Rex Center. We think the hotel, I think the hotel is a wonderful economic anchor for the Lower Capilano area. Ms. Guppy concluded her staff report, noting this application advances the goals of the OCP and the Lower Marine Village Centre implementation and strongly aligns with council's priority direction regarding rental housing in the direction of the economic development strategy.
Excuse me, Mr. Peters, we have an announcement at the moment. Sorry to interrupt. I've been told it's urgent.
Sorry, thank you. Through the chair, just want to announce that should the power at District Hall go out due to the storm, I don't know if anyone else has noticed lights flickering. The public hearing will reconvene tomorrow at District Hall at 7:00 P.M. However, we will continue with the public hearing at this time and do intend to close it if we are able to this evening.
Very sorry to interrupt that. Please, please continue, Mr. Peters.
Thank you very much. I was mentioning that the staff report noted that this application advances the goals of the OCP and the Lower Marine Village Centre implementation and strongly aligns with council's priority direction regarding rental housing and the direction of the economic development strategy. In closing, I commend both the district and Charge for persevering with this excellent project, and it is most assuredly long overdue. Thank you, your worship and council, and good evening, everybody.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next, I have Jacob Isaac. Welcome again.
Thank you, council and Madam Chair, for having me tonight. My name is Jacob Isaac, and I am the current Chair of the North Shore Community Housing Action Committee, and I am here to speak in favor of the development. Dawn just briefly touched on CHAC's involvement, but I would like to reiterate that CHAC has been involved with different stages of this development since 2014, and we have been highly encouraged by the adjustments we've seen in the proposal. First off, the developer has adjusted all 478 units to be purpose-built rental. The current standard in the housing market is to build strata on a pre-sale model. And with current lending and interest rates, we'll see future development applications leaning more into this strata model, meaning that we can anticipate a smaller ratio of purpose-built rentals in future applications. In the last decade alone, the North Shore has seen a 61% decrease in multi-unit residential development proposals that are made up of 100% rental. While it's unfortunate that the creation of 500 new purpose-built rental units is not a standard, this is a reason, all the more reason that this redevelopment should be given its due consideration. Additionally, the developer has increased the number of below-market units from six to 48, brought on the YWCA as a partner, providing a 60-year lease, and included 26 accessible units, which surpasses the municipal requirement. And speaking of the developer, we are also very pleased to see Charge take charge of this project as a local, family-led business that has provided social and infrastructural benefit to the North Shore community already. Specifically, and in partnership with the YWCA, Charge helped develop Mate Brown Place in the city of North Vancouver, which provides 14 below- and non-market units for single mothers and dependents. Charge does not employ a pump-and-dump model of strata development, but as we can see in this development application, works to provide long-term sustainability and affordability by partnering with local organizations. The YWCA partnership in particular is an incredibly necessary partnership. The YWCA provides affordable, supportive housing for women and single mothers with dependents. Women make up almost 70% of minimum wage earners on the North Shore and are those that are most heavily impacted by the housing crisis in this country and in this region specifically. While North Shore municipalities have worked hard to provide resources for women to access affordable housing, several challenges remain. First, B.C. housing does not have a waitlist for women-only housing, which has resulted in a 240-person list of North Shore residents waiting for YWCA housing. Secondly, many deeply affordable units for families are excluded from accessing building and community amenities. This results in atomization, stigmatization, and families having a lower quality of care and immunity in their buildings when they access subsidized housing. The proposed development would have a direct material and social impact on the lives of North Shore women and their children in need of deeply affordable housing. The 18 units that will be operated by the YWCA will be partially a shelter rate, which is an increasingly rare rate to see in new developments. Additionally, the layout of the development ensures that the women and families living in the YWCA units are able to access indoor and outdoor amenity space, making sure that they feel integrated into the community. And CHAC just wants to take a moment to thank the YWCA for its ongoing commitment to creating affordable housing on the North Shore. We are also very excited by the prospect of creating rental units at varying sizes, including those at two- and three-bedroom layouts. The layouts of these units will help the District of North Vancouver move towards adequately providing move towards adequately providing housing for varied family structures. And the 10% of units that are below-market will help those who have been priced out of the district's social housing mix, but for whom the current market rates are untenable. Finally, with almost $5 million in future DCCs and $10 million in infrastructure enhancement, this project will contribute to the broader economic, infrastructural, and social health of the community. CHAC will always push for deeper pockets of affordability and a greater portion of purpose-built rental units. And we do remain skeptical of the 10-ton perpetuity model that will, is helping us to appropriately respond to the housing crisis. Yet we see the addition of these units, especially those at shelter rates, operated by the YWCA as necessary. We appreciate Chart's willingness to meet with our committee, and we encourage you to support this development and bring nearly 500 purpose-built rental units to the district. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next, I have Nazrin Karimi. Welcome. You have five minutes.
Hello, Monafter. And council members. My name is Nazir, and I'm here to share my support for this project and new housing that will be operated by the YWCA in particular. I personally benefited from the employment program offered by the YWCA on the North Shore. And I truly appreciate they do to support women and families in our community. Their program range from career planning and professional development to housing support. I have gained many valuable lessons, methods, and techniques for navigating Canada's competitive job markets. When I learned that the YWCA was proposing to build new affordable housing for families in North Vancouver, I reached out to offer my help. Every family deserved a chance to build a brighter future. And this project offers that opportunity to 18 families who will receive access to safe, secure, and attainable housing in a location that is accessible by transit and medium-biking distance to public amenities, including community center directly access to the streets. The partnership between Chart Development and YWCA will bring 48 below-market homes, with 18 of these becoming part of the YWCA's housing portfolios, allowing the YWCA to continue and expand its impactful work. YWCA housing provides residents with more than just a place to live. It helps to provide stability, resilience, and a supportive community with affordable rents that range from shelter rate to rent year-to-income and low-end-of-market prices. This YWCA housing will be a lifeline for many, helping more families in our community. Thank you for your time and consideration. I sincerely hope you will approve this project, opening doors to more housing opportunities for families in the North Vancouver that need support. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you very much for coming to speak to us, Ms. Karimi. Next, I have Arthur Mills on the line or in person. Welcome, Mr. Mills. Please have a seat, and you have five minutes.
Acting there, I'm the council. My name is Arthur Mills. I'm presently retired. But previously, I was vice president of Hotel and Housing Services for the YWCA. And I lived just up Capilano. I've lived up there for some 34 years. I'm here to express my support for the proposed mixed-income rental housing and hotel project at 1634 and 1748 Capilano Road, which, subject to your approval, will be delivered by Chart Development and the YWCA in partnership. This is not their first partnership, and so they have great experience in providing this type of services to the YWCA clients. The increasing cost of housing has made it increasingly difficult for many residents, particularly young families, seniors, and low-income individuals, to find affordable housing options. But by investing in affordable housing, we can help address this critical issue and ensure that our community remains inclusive and accessible by all. The residential building as proposed comprises of 478 secured rental homes, including 430 market rentals and 48 below-market rentals. 18 of the below-market homes will be on a 60-year lease and operated by the YWCA for female-led, single-parent households, and will range from deeply affordable shelter rates to low-end-of-market. In particular, the YWCA units will enable vulnerable families in our community to access safe housing in a location that's close to schools, employment, transit, and essential services, which will provide program beneficiaries with much-needed foundation for growth, stability, and a sense of belonging. This development will generate substantial property tax revenue, create jobs during construction and operation, and attract new residents and businesses to the area. The increased foot traffic will stimulate local businesses and contribute to a vibrant and thriving community. Now, I realize that there would be a significant divergence from the OCP, but we require the additional height to fund the non-market housing and significant off-site infrastructure improvements, including the extension of Curling Road through our site onto Maguire. I certainly do hope the council will see fit to vote positively for the great housing need over the divergence from the OCP. The need is great. I'm sure I don't have to tell you that. And having spent a lot of years working around this client group in these circumstances, I can't speak long enough, only five minutes, or loud enough, keep my turned on, so I don't get thrown out. But I can't stress enough to you how important it is that this client group, and I spent a lot of years and seen a lot of needy people, and I could tell you this, you spent a week in some of the wise housing, talking to some of these clients. No one would need to be here trying to convince you we need to do this. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope that you will see fit to vote positively for this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Mills. I have Scott Dempster on virtual. Are you there, Mr. Dempster?
I am. Just give me one sec here. Hi, how are you?
Hi, we're good. How are you?
I'm good, I'm good. So my presentation was a little less formal. I didn't prepare too much, and it was, it was really warming, quite honestly, to hear a lot of the speakers before me in support. And I'm greatly in support of the project. I've been a resident of Pembroke Heights for 13 years now, just up Cap Road. My wife and two kids here, and we love our community. And the North Shore's been home. It's been amazing. And one of the things that, you know, talking development, things like that, to have the opportunity, I think, to have a developer like Chart, that's North Vancouver-born and raised, take a project like this and, and bring something to its community that is so impactful, I think, to have residential, pardon me, rental purpose housing is fantastic. Myself, for my work, to be open and honest, I'm a residential realtor, and I work on the North Shore primarily, up and down this corridor. And at first, you might think, well, you know, there's not going to be any resale opportunity here, and that's really not what it's about. For me, it's about this community, and it's about giving opportunities to people that wouldn't otherwise have it, to live on the North Shore, to be a part of this community, and to support this community. And, you know, like I said, I'm married, I have a wife, two kids, and, you know, in a different world, I would hate to think of any woman with children, you know, being out on the street or being in a, you know, less-than-desirable place to live. And we have an opportunity here to, to have something really great for them, I think, especially on the North Shore and a community that needs it. And talking about Chart, talking about the developments in the area along Capilano Road, I would say, to be honest, the Park West development, it's a bit of a disappointment. And what I mean by that is, every day I drive by there, and I'm yet to see anything that will build a community, talking about the commercial retail space on that ground level. And what Chart is proposing is something that will have job creation. It'll integrate community, it'll create amenities for our area. I think it's just, it would be amazing. It would, you know, change that corner significantly. Additionally, having the traffic be offloaded from Capilano Road, both of our boys use Norgate Field for GSL football twice a week, and, you know, those roads are quite busy. I think about traffic for the community, things like that. I think it would be, you know, a huge amenity, huge add to have that put into our community as well. So, like I said, it's, it's an opportunity here that we have a developer that has a very sound purpose with the community and such strong support behind, like I said, from the people who have spoken before me, and I thank all of them. And it's just, it's fantastic to see that a developer is wearing several hats here. And the first one being thinking about community, thinking about people as individuals and creating opportunity for a community, because like I said, that's what it's about here. We've all been, most of us have been fortunate enough to live here on the North Shore and call it home for a long time. And with housing crisis, I know it far too well. It's, it's hard for most people. And we need people, we need support, Lions Gate Hospital, all these things. There's people that work at that hospital, that travel an hour and a half each way to come and serve residents of the North Shore, right? So, we need it, we need the infrastructure, and goes without saying that I'm fully in support, and, you know, as a resident in Pembroke Heights and a resident of the North Shore, and just thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dempster.
Yeah.
I see we have next on the list virtually Hillary Matz. Okay, so we'll move on from there. Number 16 on my list is Amir Ghaffari. Mr. Ghaffari is in person. Thank you very much for joining us.
My name is Amir Ghaffari. I've been working as a real estate agent almost 50 years in North Shore, and I'm a strata manager of the commercial unit at Parkfest. So I would like to get more information about the 5,000-square-feet commercial unit that's going to be, and what is the restaurant exactly, and what is the other retails, so to share with my clients. Also, about the traffic in the Capilano, we have a significant traffic every day, almost from 4:00 P.M. to 6:00 P.M., and my clients always complain that, why this neighborhood is like this? So we bought the property here, but we have, we face a problem every night, so we don't like it, we want to move out. So I don't know, any opportunity to get more facility for the shelters or something that people can afford to communicate, to, you know, travel easily in that area? Because at this point, we have a traffic afternoon downtown, rush hour, everything. So for Parkfest, a little bit difficult, but I don't know, for the new project, they have access from Marine Drive, or they have access only from Capilano Road. I think we need a little bit more access for the Parkfest at this point, to have a more, I, to reduce the traffic and to give them more opportunity for the retails at that area. So, thank you for the opportunity, and I would be happy to receive more information about the retails and any information if you can provide the facility for the, reducing the traffic.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure how we address that officially. If you wanted to receive more information from the applicant, I'm sure the applicant is open to connecting and supplying that information. Is that right, or how does the process work? Okay, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, don't do this very often. As you may have noticed. If you could leave your contact information with staff and connect with staff about the question, and then they will be able to provide you with some answers.
I appreciate. Thank you very much for the questions.
Thank you. We seem to be holding with the lights and the power, so I'm just going to press on, if that's okay with everyone for now. Yeah, okay. So next, I have Stephanie Wilson. Hello, Ms. Wilson. Thank you so much for coming.
I didn't realize the list was going to be quite so short. Hi, my name is Stephanie Wilson, and I'm speaking in favor of the OCP amendment and resoning to allow the development of rental housing in a hotel. Ever since I moved to North Vancouver, I've been told that a significant amount of traffic comes from people who work on the North Shore but live somewhere else. I know people who commute to the North Shore from Delta and Guquitlam simply because they can't afford housing here. I've spoken with workers in my own neighborhood who want to move closer to their work but simply can't find a rental and are forced to take on a long commute. It seems so backwards to me that the people who add so much care and value to the community can't find their own housing and live in the place they contribute. We are in a housing crisis, and we get out of this crisis by building housing. In my opinion, this is an excellent location for a dense project like a tower. The location has easy access to the current public transit system for both commuting into downtown Vancouver and commuting around the North Shore. It's beside the current R2 Rapid Bus stop and is near the proposed future, future stop for LRT or Skytrade expansion. I don't think we can drive our way out of traffic congestion. I don't think we can drive our way out of traffic congestion or the significant climate, environmental, and public health impacts of traffic congestion. This development is a short distance from Spirit Trail and proposes additional protected bike lanes. Densifying around transit hubs and active transportation allows everyone to live in a vibrant center with easy access to everything they need. I also want to emphasize that transportation is also a matter of income. Many people can't afford a personal vehicle, and diverse transportation options allow them to remain mobile and engaged in the broader North Shore community. But what is most important to me is that this development includes below-market units. All of the housing in the world won't help people, won't help people in vulnerable housing situations if rentals remain unaffordable. From B.C. homelessness surveys, we know that the leading cause of homelessness in this province is unaffordable housing. I know that people have been forced to leave the North Shore in order to secure, in order to secure affordable housing, and to me, that is unacceptable. People should be able to live in the community of their choice with their friends, families, and support networks. Frankly, I wish there were more below-market units available, but still, this development will ensure 48 individuals and families have safe and secure housing in an accessible and growing neighborhood. Again, we solve the housing crisis by building housing, and for that reason, I want to support the OCP amendment and resoning. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next on the list, I have Mirel Cubo. Possibly online.
Hello, everyone.
Ms. 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 Cubo, can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you so much. Hello, everyone. My name is Mirey Gobu and I'm a tenant at the, at a YWCA operating building. So I signed it today to speak up at this meeting to share a bit about my best, my experience and tell about the impact of the YWCA Housing and Support Program in my life and my everyday journey. I'm a new immigrant, less than five years in Canada, and before joining the YWCA Housing, I was a homeless with a newborn baby coming out of, coming out from an abused relationship, no home, no source of income as my mother was still processing, no family around me to support me. Coming across the YWCA operating building changed my everyday journey. First of all, by providing a safe home to my child and my, to my child and my little family. Having a safe home was the best point for me through other resources of the YWCA Housing to build again my confidence in order to achieve my goal and move forward in my life. By having an affordable safe housing, I was able to go back to school, improve my English, working on the path to put food on the table when my child needed. And also above all, be a better mom. I would like to mention that the YWCA Affordable Housing and other program helping me and my family to feel. Thank you so much. Uh, thank you so much for your time, your consideration. I sincerely hope from the bottom of my heart that, uh, this project will be approved in order to open doors to new housing and opportunity to family like me. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for sharing your story and your comments, Ms. Cubo. Next speaker is Jo, Josh Thomas, who is virtual, I understand.
Hello.
Hello. There you are.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, loud and clear.
Awesome.
You have five minutes and go ahead, please.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. My name is Josh Thomas and I work with the Capilano Students Union over at Capilano University. I am here to express my strong support for the proposed zoning bylaw amendment. As someone who commutes to the district, driving a car over the ironworkers' bridge every day, as I cannot afford to live here and public transit to the university is essentially unusable. North Vancouver is facing a housing crisis that disproportionately affects younger residents, renters and students. Over two thirds of Capilano University students live off of the North Shore, forced to find housing as far away as Surrey, Abbotsford and even Chilliwack. And more than half of students report commutes that take them over one and a half hours each way. So many who contribute so much to the North Shore community can't even afford to live here. This development offers 100% purpose-built rental housing, including 48 below-market units that will provide critical relief for those struggling to afford a place to live. It is a chance to create homes for students, homes for workers and homes for families who want to live closer to where they study, to where they work and to where they want to contribute to their community. In addition, I'm heartened to see Shard has included significant community benefits to this project beyond just housing. It enhances the streetscape with pocket parks, a public plaza and beautification initiatives, making public spaces and streets more welcoming and vibrant. It prioritizes active and public transportation with bike lanes, wider setbacks and bus shelters to reduce car dependency and traffic congestion. And it also addresses the acute need for hotel space following the provincial Airbnb ban, supporting North Shore tourism and local businesses. I know density is often met with resistance, but I believe that thoughtful growth is critical to ensuring the district remains a thriving, inclusive community, both now and into the future. So I urge council to approve this amendment and address the lack of affordable rental housing in the district. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your comments. We go to another virtual speaker at this point, Behi Masahari.
Hello and good evening, everyone.
Oh, good evening. Hello, you have five minutes.
Sure. My name is Behi Masahari and I'm a case manager at Workbeat. I've had the privilege of working within the North Shore community for over two years, helping individuals find meaningful employment and build a stable lives. Recently, I made the decision to move to North Shore myself and I'd love to share a bit about my experience. Before moving here, I was spending more than an hour and some days up to two hours commuting in heavy traffic. The time I lost on the road was time I could have spent with my daughter or focusing on other important aspects of life. As a single mom, it took me two and a half years to finally move to North Shore due to the high cost of rentals. The stress of commute combined with the challenge of finding affordable housing made life more difficult than it needed to be. This is why I'm so excited about this project, to bring affordable housing unit to North Shore. Projects like this address more than just housing crisis. They improve quality of life for individuals and families by reducing barriers like long commutes and unstable living situations. Affordable housing provide a foundation for people to focus on their careers, education and professional growth. In my role, I see every day how housing challenges affects people's ability to find and sustain employment. Stability at home often translate into stability in workplace, which benefits the entire community. The North Shore is a vibrant and diverse area, but rising housing costs are making it harder for many people to stay here. This project ensures that the community remains inclusive and accessible to people from all walks of life. It's an investment not just in housing, but in people, people who contribute to the local economy, culture and community spirit. I strongly believe that this project will bring positive and lasting change. It'll create opportunities for stability and employment while reinforcing the values of inclusion and accessibility that makes the North Shore special. Thank you for your time and considering this important project.
Thank you very much for your comments. That exhausts the list of speakers that we have in person or virtually for the moment. Um, at this point, we've been going a solid one in a, one hour 40 minutes. So I would like to take a quick bio break. Stretch your legs, walk around, we'll, we'll come back in five minutes. Thank you. Thank you for that indulging you. This public hearing shall resume. Months. Okay, so as I mentioned earlier, we have exhausted this formal speakers list, or at least the people who signed up earlier. And, um, so now we'll go to the people who have not registered to speak. And we'll see if there is anyone observing the meeting who wishes to speak either in the room or on Zoom. Yes, I see your hands. Uh, for those who have not registered, please use the raise hand function in Zoom. If you are participating on a computer, if you are participating by phone, please press nine on your telephone keypad. This will raise your hand. If you are present in the council chamber, please raise your hand to be added to the speaker's list. I see a number of hands up. And how do we approach that? Do we just?
Usually we'll do a mix of audience and virtual, so.
Yeah, so I think, uh, we'll go to the audience first. I think Elaine, did you, you had your hand up before we took the break, so. Thank you. Um, just a reminder to please say your name for the record and/or spell it as well would be helpful. Thank you very much.
Spelling, okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of council and hardworking staff. My name is Elaine McHarg, spelled E-L-A-I-N-E-M-C capital H-A-R-G. And I'm here this evening in my capacity as CEO of the North Shore Community Foundation. We are in support of this proposed mixed income rental, rental housing and hotel project on Capilano Road, which is subject to your approval. Will be delivered by Chart Development and the YWCA in partnership. At this public hearing, various aspects of the development have been considered. It's a comprehensive project which represents a unique opportunity to continue redefining a neighborhood with a mix of housing, business and employment opportunities, along with thoughtful community amenities. Our focus in speaking tonight are the housing and neighborhood building benefits of this proposal. As a community foundation, one of our principles is to understand the needs of the community and how initiatives can build and enhance a stronger sense of belonging. Housing support has been a priority in our annual community granting and the selection of designated charities for our signature fundraiser, also known as the North Shore Community Foundation Golf Tournament. Where you live is perhaps one of the most frequently asked questions when people get to know each other in community. It is easy and it helps to identify points of commonality, networks of support and even possible friendships. It is easy and it helps to identify points of commonality, networks of support, and even possible friendships. How it is answered matters. Housing is the foundation of family wellbeing and housing unaffordability is often why individuals and families experience instability and accept substandard housing or sacrifice other critical needs. Housing affordability, stability, quality, tenure and location have been shown to impact child development and opportunities for individuals and households. We've all heard the heartbreaking stories. Supportive affordable housing can help to address this critical issue and ensure the community remains inclusive and accessible and also thriving. The program by the Y W C A is to provide housing integrated into neighborhoods and with supportive services is a program for our times. These Y W C A units enable vulnerable families led by women in our community to access safe, accessible housing in locations that are close to school, employment, transit and essential services, which provide a much needed foundation for growth, stability and a sense of belonging. North Shore Community Foundation has supported the Y W C A housing through a number of different programs and we applaud the work that they do. Critical to these types of signature initiatives is a forward looking organization. It's the integrity of the developer and Char Development is known as one of these forward looking organizations. They are known to the community, they are of the community and they support the community across a range of areas. The partnership with Y W C A is well established and a proven and well executed model. It makes a real and tangible difference in the lives of families that need this support and services. In closing, the proposed development includes a number of enhancements to make the area more livable and when built will add to the community in housing plus business and social prosperity. The Lionsgate Village area is one of the gateways to North Vancouver. This opportunity is for more people across all ages, backgrounds, incomes. When asked where they live, to proudly answer right here. I appreciate your time and consideration and ask you to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next person from the floor, please. Yes, go ahead. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, Acting Mayor Pope and District Council members. My name's Erin Sealy. My pronouns are she and her and I'm the CEO of Y W C A Metro Vancouver. I'm heartened and encouraged tonight to hear so much support for this project. Sometimes optimism feels like hard work and it doesn't tonight and it's great to see the careful consideration you're giving to it. I'm so grateful to be here and honored to work with such an incredible team and the women you heard Behe, Nasrin, Mimi talk about their experience as well as the supportive and compassionate team we have here delivering programs. As one of the largest multi-service charities in Vancouver and across Metro Vancouver, Y W C A's mission is to advance gender equity through advocacy and integrated services. Affordable housing is a key pillar of our supportive programming and it's foundational for personal and economic wellbeing. Women, especially single mothers, are hard hit and especially when they're leaving violent relationships, there's very few places that they can turn. We know that 11% of women in British Columbia are in core housing need and single mothers are particularly vulnerable. As was already mentioned tonight, Y W C A Housing does not keep lists specific to single mother needs of housing or to women's housing. We know that Y W C A has a waitlist of over 1,100 women and their families and we know that in the district and the city of North Shore, or at North Vancouver, sorry, we have 140 women on the waitlist already. Y W C A Housing goes beyond providing a home. Residents receive ongoing support from a dedicated community development worker who provides information and referrals for services such as counseling, childcare, personal safety, legal education and employment services, including those delivered by Y W C A down the street on First Avenue at the Work B C Employment Centre. This support also ensures that women and children have access to more network of services and referrals, community gatherings, holiday hampers, school supplies, bus tickets, food vouchers, mentorship and bursaries. It's this type of holistic wraparound programming that is so life-changing and transformational for families. This project, subject to council approval, will produce hundreds of new purpose-built rental homes to meet growing demand and will include 48 below market rental homes, as you've heard, of which 18 will be operated by the Y W C A, ranging in rents from shelter rates to low end of market. It's close to transit, school and amenities. It's exactly the progress, the project and the program that we look to deliver across Metro Vancouver. The rental rates for these homes will be significantly less, $695 a month is the shelter rate if you're on income assistance as a single parent with a child and at least four of these units will be offered at that rate. Y W C A currently operates 16 housing communities across the region, almost 350 units in total, including transitional housing for women fleeing violence. This development would be the third housing project in partnership with Char Development and our third building in North Vancouver and our first in the district, so we're really excited about it. We currently have 23 homes in the city of North Vancouver and we are seeing overwhelming demand for our services there. We are proud to be recognized as a collaborative partner and are committed to expanding the availability of high-quality affordable housing to empower low-income, single mothers and their children. We are fortunate to be sought after as a development partner and we do significant due diligence when being approached by potential project collaborators. We look for alignment with our values and I can say with extreme competence that Char, being local, family owned, we've got Byron and his father David here, share our values to building community and we are excited to be working with them on this project. Tonight you've heard and will hear more, I think of some personal stories of women who live in our housing in North Vancouver or who have accessed our services. I hope that you will consider the impact of your decision when you're casting your votes and the opportunity that you have to make a huge difference to secure affordable, permanently affordable housing for families and community. Y W C A Metro Vancouver is working toward a future where safe, secure housing is affordable and accessible for all women and their families. And we hope that your council will grant approval to expand our housing program and have a lasting and positive impact in the District of North Vancouver. Thank you.
Thank you. Just before you go, Ms. Sealy, can I just get you to clarify the number? You said 140 women on the waitlist. Is that for the city and the district combined?
It's combined. It's for the North Shore, so it may also include West Vancouver. We do prioritize local residents when looking to fill new projects.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do we have somebody on the phone to go to at this point? Um, do we have a name? Okay, we have five, six, five.
Hi.
Online. Hi there. Can you please state your name and then you have five minutes to speak?
Yes, my name is Mike Sawyer and last name is S A W Y E R and I've been a member of the Capelano Rugby Club for over 30 years and I'm the current sponsor of the youth program at the rugby club. So I'll be brief, but wanted to add my support to this project, which will create new rental and affordable housing with zero displacement to existing residents. I was also very pleased to hear that the plans included adding a new hotel that will have a restaurant in the lobby. Since the Earl's has closed down, there's definitely been a shortage of food and beverage options. And I'm actually very surprised that there hasn't been more in Lionsgate Village to date. This will be a great benefit to the rugby club and the members. I'd also like to comment on the proposed traffic infrastructure improvements. Whilst I won't benefit myself from the housing, I will definitely benefit from the improved traffic flow. I visit the rugby club three to four times a week. I commute down from Ballonsdale. And I look forward to seeing the Curling Road extension completed, which will make my journey a lot more efficient. As a neighbor just down the rugby, just down the street from this site, we're excited with the new investment in the community. We're excited to see this site renewed after a lengthy planning process and I hope the council will give this project the green light. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much for your comments and we'll come back in-house. Yes, and then I'll get to you next and then we'll go back to this side of the room. Hello and thank you very much for coming. Please remember to state your name and spell it for us. Thank you.
The overhead.
Go ahead whenever you're ready with your name. Are you waiting for?
Waiting for the overhead. Thank you. John Miller, live in Towne Avenue, which is two blocks east of Maguire Avenue. So directly east of this, this project. I've lived there for 49 years. Whilst I'm in favor of the hotel portion of this proposal, I'm not in favor of the tower and the adjoining building proceeding at this time. Too much height and too much density on this particular site. Well, at the same time, I do not believe that the infrastructure required to support this site and density has been properly addressed. The proposed lighted intersection at Capelano Road and Maguire Avenue could be changed to a T intersection with no road on the west and no lights. Configuration should be identical to that of Capelano and Garden intersection to the north, where there is a right turn out only from Garden and left turns in from Capelano heading south and no pedestrian crossings allowed. In other words, when you come up here, you have a right out, you have a left in. No roads and no pedestrian crossings. You have three. Certainly there's pedestrian crossings at Capelano Road, Fullerton and Curling and Marine Drive. So there's three pedestrian crossings in a four-block area and that should be enough. We don't need the fourth. The district rejected a proposal for a hotel for the property at 1801 Capelano Road and then spent $9 million buying the property to assist staff in completing the public realm. Whatever that means. This included a road from Capelano Road to nowhere, leading to a plaza that is dead for the most part of the year, except for one day when the community center held a party on the plaza event. It has turned into a white elephant and spending additional time and money on the public realm is a waste. The district did not listen to the committee of council that was put together years ago. The committee consisted of representatives from the Nor Gate Park Community Association, the Pemberton Heights Community Association, the Lower Capelano Residents' Community Association, the Lionsgate Community Association, along with representation from Woodcroft and district planners headed by Mr. Ross Taylor. This committee of council unanimously agreed that the Larko site was the last place to put a community center and the selected place was Nor Gate Park. Ultimately, due to lack of funding, the project was abandoned and the committee was dissolved. I understand that the district is now considering affordable housing for the site purchased on Capelano Road and deleting the roam or any public realm on the site will be more room for additional affordable housing. In the staff report, it states the staff contacted the school district regarding Capelano Elementary and Nor Gate Elementary Schools. The report does not state what the response from the school board was, if any. Currently, the proposed site is within the Capelano Elementary School catchment boundary, but it is well known that Capelano Elementary is full and has been for some time. There's sufficient room at Nor Gate Elementary, but it is a poor location for elementary students that would be living in the proposed tower and adjoining building. However, I understand that the district is currently considering a land swap with the school board that would result in Nor Gate School being rebuilt on the current Nor Gate Park site, much rural central area, which was determined by a committee of council many years ago. The intersection of Marine Drive and Maguire Avenue is proposed to have lights added to it. What has been hidden from the public and all the reports in the public meetings held for this project is the traffic flow and configuration of the intersection when this project goes in. Maguire Avenue on the north of Marine Drive does not line up with Maguire Avenue itself. This is Marine Drive, Maguire North, Maguire South is quite offset, so. The question is, the district's collecting DCCs from the project, as stated in the staff report, but are there sufficient funds for those DCCs to reconfigure the intersection to include an eastbound left turn lane to head north on Maguire? As it currently is insufficient land for that lane. We're constantly being told that development pays for itself, but is that the case here? Are there sufficient funds being held back to address this if it's not done now in the future? One of the options for the bus rapid transit, BRT line being considered is to use 15th Street rather than Marine Drive. If it follows the previous route that buses used in the past during morning rush hour, it would come up Maguire and turn left on Marine Drive. What happens to this intersection configuration if that happens? I see multiple times, so I'll come back for a second, five.
Yes, if you have something to add that's.
I've got more.
From previous.
I've got more.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Miller, can we go to, yes, the gentleman in the back there and then we'll move to this side of the room. Hi there.
Hi, thank you.
Please state your name and spell it for us and then you have five minutes.
Yes, my name is David Cameron. Cameron with a C, not a K. I am coming to speak as a resident in the area for the last nine years on both Garden and Maguire. From the get-go, I'm very supportive of the project, of the development itself. I do have some concerns and comments, though that sort of coexist with that support. When I first moved into Garden, our first child was born in that house and I witnessed people try to go zero to 60 from what is now around about to beat a traffic light on Garden and Capelano. I raised concerns with the engineering department in this district who said the street was already traffic calmed and three years later, finally speed bumps were put on that street. So I do have concerns about traffic, speed, what calming looks like. I'm not here on the intersection like the previous speaker on both Capelano or on Green, even for right-hand turning, as a resident who often tries to turn right from Capelano to Maguire. You either wait behind a bus, block a Garden Avenue or turn over two lanes in front of a parked bus to get onto Maguire. There is a bus stop there. Also a concern for me and things I've raised in previous conversations is in regards to parking on Maguire. I do believe this falls outside of the scope of the developer, but would fall inside in the scope of the district. The loss of street parking is a very real cost to residents on Maguire. At any particular evening when people are coming back from their working day, pretty much every spot on Maguire is taken up. I've also had conversations with the applicant and their consultants who have said that they can assure access to Maguire during construction. I've worked beside three active construction sites, moving trucks in and out as a business and I can say that is something that I take with a grain of salt and I don't know what the district can and what this council can assure as far as access during a construction phase onto Maguire. I am very much in support of a public pathway through Hope. I don't see any clarity on this development and I don't know what it would take for the district to give access, to give clarity on what Hope in Maguire, Hope in Cap, Hope all the way through to the plaza looks like and when that would take place and what in this element, what would happen to the very far side, I guess, the north side of Maguire with the slight turn rather than how it exits right now. It's from reading notes that I took throughout the day. I really do hope that this project becomes a catalyst to deal with bigger planning and community concerns I see in this neighborhood, including density and comments in the O C P for the immediate blocks on the east side of this development, going down from 30 stories to four is a, is a big steep drop. And seeing that utilities are being replaced on Maguire, I hope there's some forward planning so that a future development on Maguire and/or Capilano does not trade again tax dollars for re-gaming up that street to again upgrade water and sewer in trading additional density on those lands. Yeah, that's, thank you for your time and for the consideration today. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing your comments. Next in the room, yes, the gentleman in the mid. Hello. Didn't recognize you there for a second.
That's all right.
Glad you could come.
Thank you. Good evening, Acting Mayor and Council. So my name is Dave Hargreaves, H A R G R E A V E S. And I work for Seaspan Shipyards, which is one of the largest employers here on the North Shore. Today, we have a little over three thousand employees on the North Shore and about sixty percent, a little over sixty percent of them commute from off the North Shore. So sadly, we are a key contributor to the traffic problems on the North Shore, although we do have a bunch of efforts to try to resolve that. So we are very supportive of this project and of building more housing on the North Shore for our employees. We're going to be building ships and repairing ships for the next, I don't know, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years. So we have a long-term outlook on the community benefits. We are also, the traffic is a huge issue for us. So for our employees, the commute is a massive problem. And so having more housing on the North Shore is a huge solution to that problem as well. And we are very acutely aware that the traffic problems affect a lot of other people on the North Shore and a lot of other businesses as well. So we look forward to that. The last thing about the development that is good for Seaspan is that we also struggle with the lack of hotel space on the North Shore. So having another hotel is also a very good thing as we attract a lot of visitors to the North Shore for our businesses as well. So having said all that, it's actually not why I came tonight. The reason I came tonight is I'm a huge fan of the YWCA. And a couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to go and visit one of their facilities downtown and meet with Aaron and their team and see firsthand what the facility looks like. And I can't say enough about this organization. I've been working with them for way more than ten years now. And what they do is just unbelievable. And it's not just about the housing part of what they do, which is super important for women, but also all the wraparound services in the other organization, which is just amazing. And so I really would encourage you to support this project. I think it has so many good features, both for the business community, but also more importantly, for women who are disadvantaged and having some trouble. So thank you for your time tonight, and hopefully we can all get this done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hargreaves, and nice to see you. All right, next in the audience, we have, you had your hand up earlier. Would you like to step up?
So we're just going to hear from the clerk, just repeating and reminding everyone while you're getting set up there of our procedures, should the power go down.
Thank you, through the chair. This is to state that if District Hall loses power this evening, the public hearing will reconvene at seven PM on Wednesday, November twentieth, twenty twenty-four in council chambers at District Hall or District Municipal Hall and via Zoom. However, this is only in the event of a power outage at District Hall.
Thank you for joining us. Please state your name for the record and spell it if you can. That would be great.
Thank you. My name is Babs Perone, P E R O W N E. I've been a North Vancouver resident for over twenty years. I have found it very difficult trying to say whether or not I would support the project or not, because there are many excellent features, including the hotel, including the affordable rental units and the facilities that will be managed by the YW, all excellent. However, where I stumble on giving my full-hearted approval is the heights of the residential building. At thirty-seven stories, it is out of scale with the community. And the project does not, in my mind, fully take into account the community aspects of where it's located and the other facilities or lack thereof in the neighborhood. We seem to have no provision being made for schools, as other people have mentioned. There's also emergency services where fire trucks are in fact first responders to the neighborhood. And while I don't necessarily expect a fire immediately, there will undoubtedly be some later on, and they do provide medical or respond to medical calls. When I look at the road access to that particular area and the sharp bend in the extension to Curling, it's going to be very awkward for trucks to get in and out, for fire trucks to get in and out. You also have the service providers that are going to be servicing the hotel. You have moving vans, and you also have garbage and recycling trucks. And I cite these because of the issues that we have with those very vehicles coming into the development on the west side of Capilano Road. They take the wrong way around the roundabout because they can't get around properly. They come around exit on the north side, which is somewhat of a traffic hazard, which is just an example of the consideration I'm asking to be given to the new project on the east side. The other thing that I have a concern about is the long-term amenities that need to be built and thereafter maintained by the district, the cost to the district for building those infrastructures such as schools, health facilities, senior centers, daycare centers. Not necessarily all of them have to be built by the district, but in many cases they are. So I would ask you as council members to take into account when you're evaluating this project, the other costs that will go into it and not just look at this one site. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perone. Do you have anyone on the line again? Okay, so we'll just stick with the who's here at the moment. Yes, sir. Would you like to go ahead?
Hello, everyone.
Hello and welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Ms. Amir Zohourian. And I'm living in Maguire Avenue for more than twenty years now.
Would you mind spelling your name for us?
Amir, A M I R, and last name is Z O H O U R I A.
Thank you.
I am not here in objection to this project. And I believe that this project is bringing value to our community there. But the only thing that I have consideration is about the traffic. So right now, that area in North Vancouver is such a bottleneck. So all the traffic coming from, you know, the whole North Shore coming to that area and, you know, adding this project, at least bring another five hundred vehicles. That's the minimum. And I'm just wondering, before, you know, this project has been approved by this week, I'm hoping that, you know, this week, do something about the traffic. That's, you know, all my requests at this point. That's all concern that I have. Thank you.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you very much for sharing your concerns. Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken for the first time? One last call for anyone else who has not spoken for the first time, either online, on the phone, or in the room. Then we'll move on to second-time speakers only. Yes, welcome back, please. Come up, Mr. Miller, for your second. Please go ahead when you're ready, and you have another five minutes.
Thank you. When the westbound bus lane to the bridge began years ago, it started on Marine Drive between Tattlow Avenue and Garden Avenue. In order to accommodate it, the left-turn lanes on Marine Drive at Garden Avenue were deleted, along with most of the straight-through traffic lane for cars going to West Van or turning south on Cap Road. Added was a no-left turn sign for eastbound cars on Marine Drive to turn left and head north on Garden Avenue. Despite having the ability to turn for years, it was eliminated because there was no lane. As Garden Avenue is the only collector for the west half of the Lower Capilano community, this was quite an imposition. I questioned the need for a no-left turn twenty-four seven with Mr. Steve Carney, the manager of transportation planning at the time. And he wouldn't give any reasoning for it, only to say that the district was trying to stop acute jumpers from avoiding the left-turn lanes on Marine Drive onto Cap Road. He said it was just to start and he would review it later. Much later, there was a joint meeting of representatives from the two local community associations, Norgate Park and Lower Capilano, who met with Mr. Steve Ono and Mr. Steve Carney regarding the local traffic issues. At this meeting, the point was once again raised as to basis for a no-left turn enforced twenty-four seven rather than just during rush hour. Another promise was made and not followed through to review it. When the bus lane was extended on Marine Drive to Philip Avenue, no-left turn restrictions were put in at Tattlow, Bowser, or Magowan Avenues. This was questioned once again with reference to why Garden Avenue had the restriction. And we were told it was just a starting point that staff wanted to study the results before considering whether to put in left-turn restrictions at these intersections, and it would be reviewed later. With the left turn at Garden and Marine, residents from the west side of our community coming from West Van or from the Lions Gate Bridge must get into the left-turn lane going up Cap Road and turning right onto Hope Road into the community. Yet for when this proposal goes ahead, Hope Road at Cap Road is going to be closed, shutting down our current route into the community. Can anyone provide justification for a no-left turn twenty-four hours a day at Marine and Garden Avenue? There's no reasonable justification as it stands, and closing yet another route into our community is going to happen with the unkept promises from district to review things. If left turns at Marine and Maguire are allowed, why can we not get the same consideration for our community? Is allowing left turns heading north at Marine and Maguire not creating the same shortcut that staff have tried so long to avoid at Marine and Garden? Raises because once again, through all the public meetings, questions put forth, nobody could answer what's happening at Maguire and Marine Drive. This diagram here is from the district's website. It shows ultimately two straight-through heading east and one left turn. Unfortunately, the overlay shows in order to accomplish that, we'll be taking out some of the paint property and with the glass place there. Unfortunately, I don't think you will see it, but the bottom line is that left-turn lane is needed for this proposal. You've got over three hundred parking spaces. You've said how you're getting out of the community. How are you getting back into the community? The entry for the underground parking for the tower is on Maguire, close to the Marine Drive. Are they all going to be forced to come up Cap, over Curling, and down Maguire? Because you're not going to allow turns at Maguire and Marine? Nobody's been able to answer the question. Why? What's the big secret? Is it because the YRT line might be using that intersection? If you haven't got the infrastructure here to support those cars, why are we going ahead with this thing? Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you want to leave your contact number with that specific question with staff, then we will try and get an answer for you from the.
They know of the thing.
They've received it already?
Thank you.
I see. All right. Thank you very much. Are there any further speakers who want to speak a second time? Yes, please.
Thank you, council. I'll keep my comments short. We've heard a lot of opinions and numbers tonight, and I think when we, you know, at the end of our long workday, it becomes all too easy to be insufficiently struck by the hardness of the situation of housing precarity, specifically for the women and families who would benefit from the housing provided by the YWCA. I think it's important that we take a step back and ask if we're trading off shadows for shelter. I just ask you to, at the end of the day, go home and ask what the overall community benefit will be. I also just want to address the idea that there's this disposition towards development where approving a development is active and voting against it is passive. But in this situation with the YWCA involvement, voting against this would be actively consenting towards allowing these women and these families to continue being challenged for housing. It would also actively be consenting to pushing development on this lot, on a lot that we know needs redevelopment when we look at these motels, pushing it to a later time when most likely market conditions will make it more challenging to provide these shelter rates and these discounts. So I just ask you guys to, at the end of the day, just remember how hard housing precarity can be. I know a lot, I shouldn't say I know, I'm going to assume that most of us have a home to go to tonight. And I just ask that you keep in mind how hard these situations can be, and I commend the people who got up tonight and spoke of their own housing precarity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cameron, I saw your hand up again to be a second speaker. Go ahead if you like.
Sorry, yes, David Cameron. Thank you. Just one or two additional comments. So I, too, in summary, want to make sure that if this project doesn't move forward, it would be a major loss to the community. That said, there are a few things that I really hope you do take a look at. And one of the things I forgot to mention earlier is, as a cyclist, I will say, coming from downtown into this community to cross four lanes of traffic to turn left on Capilano is one of the hairiest moves a cyclist will ever make. Either that intersection or a left-hand turn from Marine onto Maguire, I really hope you consider a different alternative, even if that is a holding area for cyclists to be sitting on the right-hand gutter in a safe area and then cross normally with the traffic going straight through. Please do take a look at cycling, if we're going to take cycling on the North Shore seriously. It's not just people commuting from west Vancouver to get into the four blocks of traffic, sorry, four blocks of housing that can only be accessed on Garden and Hope. It's also people commuting from downtown. And I agree, when I come this way, the only way into this community for me is off of Hope Road. There is no left-hand turn on Maguire. There's no left-hand turn on Garden. You could drive all the way up through traffic and turn right on Garden, I guess, from the north side. It does add unneeded traffic into and on Capilano. So please do take a look at the prior comment made by the resident. Yeah, that's it. Sorry. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. All right, at this time, I think that what I would like to do is turn to the questions for staff from council. And would you like to?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have so far received, tallying this up, about seventeen questions. And we're still answering some of the recently raised questions, but we can get started. And I will answer the first question, and then I'll pass it on to Mr. Cameron. Yeah, if you can. So the first question is about can staff and the applicant provide the shadow maps for the surrounding neighborhood? The slides show only the building and the street impact. I would like to see the larger area. So so the applicant submitted the shadow analysis based on district requirements. And it's shown, so this is shown on the large screen here. Usually the shadow analysis, the boundary of such analysis is defined by the area that will be impacted by the proposed tower. So you know, the influence area that will be, you know, under this proposed tower. And so this is a spring and fall equinox shadow analysis. And then it's based on district requirements at 10:00 AM in the morning, moving towards the right hand is noon and 2:00 PM and 6:00 PM. And so as you can see, this, this, the, the big shadow, the, the long shadow of this tower sweep across the entire sort of north end of the neighborhood and then ending with in the, at the 6:00 PM, it's entirely dark. So I would say that this map kind of shows the influence area of this tower and shows the appropriate boundary. And I, I, I think I'm not quite sure if this answer this particular question, but yeah, it's definitely showing that it's, it's anything outside this area is immaterial to the shadow created by this tower.
And these maps are fully available.
It is part of the, the drawing set included in the binder.
Yeah, thank you. You want to move on to the next question?
Yes, we're moving on to next question. Yeah. I'll pass it on to Ms. Capi.
Okay, I will repeat the question and then try my best to answer it. And in some cases, I'll be relying on this handy dandy applicant team beside me. So the next question was, can staff of the applicant clarify the below-market rents for the thirty non-YMCA units? Which are proposed to be rented at 10% below market rates for, for units built after 2000? How will this rate be calculated on a go-forward basis? So this is how those housing agreements I mentioned in passing come into play. They help us outline not only the references, so in this case, CMHC publishes data every year, well, I think more regularly than that, every month that we can refer to. But in the housing agreement, we have the ability to say we can use the CMHC data, but should at some point in the future that data not be available? Then we have both a description of what we're looking for, but also a mechanism that allows it to be or to the satisfaction of staff, so, or sorry, the district. And in most cases, it's the the general manager of planning, sorry, I'm pointing at Dan, but so it, we do have a mechanism to track this over time. The next question is, can staff confirm that it will be right turn only at Maguire Avenue and Capilano Road? So, and maybe I should just bring up a site plan because there are a few questions that relate to traffic movements. So if we just maybe go to this one, and if I can zoom in, that might be a little bit easier for us if I go from, does that help a little bit? Okay. So this is this new intersection that's proposed where the idea is that Hope Road, which is up here, would close. And Maguire actually bends around to then meet, which a new, and this was in the local plan called a crossroads. The transportation work that was done, was it earlier this year, last year? Showed that this crossroads only needed to be a pad bike connection through to the plaza, the community center, and of course, Belal Park beyond. But this intersection would then allow right turns, but also can be signalized and allow left turns. Now, with any of these road improvements, if we have the road and the intersection, we can manage it over time. We can add no left turns at peak hours if that becomes a problem. We have mechanisms to make it function more smoothly, but at this point, it's being currently designed to have both movements. So the next question. At thirty-seven stories, will this be the tallest building in the district? If approved, yes, this will be the tallest building. The next question is, is there a restaurant in the hotel? And the answer is yes. Both independent restaurant and a dining area for guests as well. The next question is, what are the details around commercial space? How many units and, and what kind of mix? So a couple pieces to this. In the hotel, of course, the hotel itself is commercial, but it also has the aforementioned restaurant, which is approximately 3,000 square feet in size. On the south side, while it's primarily residential, we do have commercial units fronting Capilano Road, and that's approximately 5,000 square feet in size and can be demised into any kind of combination of small or large units. Other thing to note is the zoning for these, for especially the, the CRUs is such that it's only retail and restaurant uses that are permitted. So this isn't going to be a case of another five dentists moving in. It's rather just oriented to that kind of commercial that actually animates the street. Next question. So the next question we have is, sorry, realize I'm not speaking to the mic. Is, is this application increasing the number of hotel units? Do we still have a hotel deficit in this area? And I think there's been a couple of different numbers bandied around, so for a little bit of clarity. On the existing site, we have two hotels, which in total have 169 units. So this project completely replaces the hotel units that are on the subject site. But over the last few years, we have seen other hotels close. So we saw Grouse Inn close, and we've more recently, well, I guess a few years back, we saw the Trail Lodge close for hotel use. And in terms of numbers, that means if this project goes ahead, we would have a deficit of 131 units. And I should add that both through the local plan process and through some of the more recent economic studies, there seems to be a sweet spot for hotels in this area. And it, and we were working on the local plan. The thinking at that time was that it was okay for some of the hotels to close, so long as we had one new replacement hotel of between 100 and 150 units. The more recent studies are saying that's still probably the sweet spot, but they're willing to push the envelope and, and, but 170 is probably the upper maximum for this particular site and neighborhood at this time. So that's kind of anything to add. Okay, next question is, is there office space? So again, the, the commercial is really focused at the ground level and is focused on that restaurant and retail use. But that said, for the residential building, the zoning permits both home-based businesses and working from home. And the amenity area includes a co-working area, but there is no formal office space on the ground floor. The next question, I'm not quite sure I'm getting it exactly right, but I think it says, why would we not require laybys? Then I'm not quite sure what it says, and then the rendering only shows one layby restricting traffic when public transit makes a stop. So I think what this is getting at is along the Capilano frontage, we are hoping to see an improved transit lane. So something to keep in mind is along the entire Capilano frontage, we're seeing a widening of the, the road allowance by 22 feet, which accommodates a variety of things. The transit stop as requested by TransLink guidelines at this time, and Daniel, jump in if I'm getting this wrong. But as I understand it, on roads like this that are very busy, they don't want the buses to pull out of traffic because then you have problems getting back into traffic. So they actually desire the transit stop to be in its lane. And you'll see that, for example, along Lawn Sale, that might be one that kind of jumps out to you in terms of how that works. That said, there's, we're also looking at where we can find a site for coach traffic. So things like the Grass Mountain Bus, the Cap Suspension Bridge buses, and whether those will be circling around and coming onto site or potentially coming into a layby. If they are in a layby, they would actually be out of traffic because there's not the same urgency on getting them back into the flow of traffic. Daniel, just And sorry, this is Daniel Fung, the engineer with Bunton, who's been working in this neighborhood for over 10 years now. So I've worked with him on a lot of projects over the years.
I'll just add that Thompson, through the chair, all the information is correct. One of the things that was on the minds of the project team was how do we make it so then the coach buses have a space to make sure they're out of traffic? What Thompson said was right, that the frequency of the TransLink buses are much higher in terms of where they are. And exactly as she has indicated, the guidelines generally indicate it's harder to pull in and pull out from a layby standpoint. That's why the project team is capitalizing on the potential for a lower frequency coach bus to be in the layby altogether, to help with that joint situation as much as possible.
That, could I just, can I just, that was my question. Can I just ask a further question on that? Given that the, the corner of the building and where the transit stop is, is so close to the intersection. I mean, we, we see this all the time, especially in a congested area like this, when there is a bus in that lane and it fills the lane, you know, and people are going to make left, they often get stuck in the intersection because there's a bus sitting in that outside lane. And the area is so congested. I mean, you know, it is the law to yield to a bus. And, you know, it, it does, people do yield. I'm just wondering if there's options for that, or is this a hard and fast rule?
I think there are options in that, at this point, we have a kind of conceptual design. And, and what, there's been enough testing to show that these ideas and these dimensions generally work. But we have yet to do the detailed design. And one of the things we've actually been discussing in-house, and sorry, this is a bit of a surprise to Daniel, is whether this is actually the ideal spot for the transit bus stop. Generally, Transit likes to, TransLink likes to have their buses on the far side of the intersection. But if we're improving Maguire, there may be an opportunity to actually slide that bus stop further up as well, which means that it'll be easier for people to get to the community center, get to the heart of the, the community. So we're, we're kind of exploring that, and I don't see why at the same time we can't explore your point. I think it's a valid one. I just, you know, I think it's something that will have to be worked through and with various experts in the room and probably with our TransLink partners as well.
Thank you. Next question.
Okay, then, moving on, the next question is, is there a conference room? There are two meeting rooms which are designed to be flexible to accommodate special events and small business conferences, but it's not a conference center. Who will be the long-term landlord of the 430 market rental units and that will be Charred? Charred Developments? Sorry, I'm using the wrong mouse. That's why my thing isn't moving. Okay, here we go. Who will manage the thirty non-YWCA, non-market units? So this again ties back into those housing agreements under provincial legislation. It'll be, they will be managed by a nonprofit. But that can be a nonprofit branch of Charred Developments. If, if that makes sense. So it's a, a kind of step in arms length, but they can be connected.
Yes.
I guess it's a question of the applicant, perhaps, if they have any idea if it will be a branch of, of their company, or if it'll be another nonprofit that would potentially run those units. Through your worship, we'd be looking to work with, let's say, a not-for-profit who would already be in the building to help administer. The, the key reason for the Housing Society aspect of the housing agreement is to make sure that the affordability and the requirements to, for them to remain affordable can be enforced. And so we'd be looking for collaboration with the YWCA on that.
Next question?
The next question is, how many total parking spots will this develop and how will this development solve traffic congestion? Okay, so several pieces to that. In total, the project has 336 parking spaces. But how, how do we say bringing more density can actually help things? And I think part of that is when you take the long-term view and you think about how following the mayor's vision and the, I always get the acronym on the BURK project, this idea of bringing rapid transit to the North Shore. If we put density in the right place, we have a stronger chance of bringing that rapid transit. And we've seen that along the Marine Drive corridor as we put density there together with the city and we were able to bring in the rapid bus. So it's again, that moving, putting density in the right places that then can support a future Skytrain that can then improve how people can move through our community. The other piece of that in the short term is about the traffic demand management work, and that's where you get into the improved cycling connections, the improved transit connections, the potential transit passes, the potential bike share programs, things that allow people to, in a livable and practical way, either not have a car or leave that car at home.
Just a minor clarification. The bus rapid transit is the focus of discussion through the mayor's plan right now. The eventual technology, whether it's Skytrain or some other form of rapid transit, is to be determined. And what's been proposed is a business case analysis done by TransLink, hopefully to be funded in next year's funding plan, that would look at answering those types of questions. So that, I just heard the word Skytrain, that's to be determined through analysis in discussions with TransLink.
Don't mean to overpromise there, so thank you. I'm just hopeful. Okay, then we, here we go. Can staff advise regarding Maguire and the issues around traffic flow? And there's several questions that then kind of tie into some of John's comments and some of Cameron's comments. So perhaps, could I have the, because that, that way I can point at some of these things a little bit. Okay, so I'm not quite sure I'm going to cover all the key topics, but it might, again, it's part of thinking about how Maguire and the Curling Road extension tie together. By widening Maguire where the, adjacent to the site and the widening is by over 16 feet, we have the potential and the realigning, we create a new intersection here, we allow traffic to come through here. We're going to be opening Maguire where it's currently closed at the south end, you may know that this alerts. And then adding an intersection, yes, as John mentioned, it is offset, but that still has the capacity to allow for those left turn, left-hand turns onto Marine so that you can head east from the site. In, I think, yeah, so that was part of it. Next question that related to that was, what are the improvements to Hope and Maguire as far as pedestrian access? So I think this is getting at that new crossroads and getting pedestrians who may be coming from Hope and then onto this plaza and across, or who may be coming from the site into the heart of Lionsgate where the community center is. So it's this new crossing here that is under discussion. And then the next question we had is, can staff provide information on emergency services on egress and access to the west side of Capilano Road? I mean, I, I'm not quite
I'm just requesting that emergency services, based on what Mr. Miller said, is that there's challenges with ingress and egress on the west side. And I'd like Fire Emergency Services to comment on it when the report comes back to council.
Okay, and I can absolutely follow up with them. And they have, of course, been involved in the review of this project to date.
Can I just interrupt for a second, Mr. Milver?
Just wanted to add a general comment. You know, the, the staff working closely with the consultants have looked at ways to try to address the, you know, immediately adjacent and the potential impacts to adjacent intersections. One of the key things in a rezoning process is to discuss land dedication. So the land dedication for road and pedestrian and, and bicycle expansion is a really key decision at the time of rezoning, because when you have the land, then you can look at alternatives such as the laybys and so on in the future. We do know that with more development We do know that with more development in the area, there will be further discussion about adjustments and fine tuning over time in the adjacent road network. The important point is that no one project will solve all of those issues in any one particular time. There will be an evolution of transportation needs over time. Certainly, as we look at rapid transit movement along the Capilano, pardon me, the Marine Drive corridor, that itself will be a whole other conversation about prioritization, laning, turning, and so on. So as, as we evolve, we will learn more and, and adjust as we go. The important consideration, certainly from staff's perspective, is that we're recommending important land dedications to give us the flexibility to adapt to both the known needs as well as potential changes. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that clarification.
Then I think this is the last question. Describe when and how the below market or YWCA rents will rise over time. Okay. Byron, I might need your help on this one, but, but essentially it comes back to those housing agreements and, and that they set up a proportional rate. So for the below market, it's a proportion as compared to market, so it's 10% below market. And so as market changes over time, you have that relationship that's built into the housing agreement. For the YWCA, it's tied to definitions that are currently used by BC Housing. And so again, the housing agreement reflects that. Now, nothing in either housing agreement prevents nonprofits from offering rents at better rates, like at lower rates, or providing more units at lower rates. So if there's an opportunity down the line to do better, that's completely possible. But what the housing agreements ensure is that at least this package continues in the perpetuity of the building. Now, Dan, did I kind of get that right from your perspective?
Sure, thank you. Acting Mayor Pope. Just wanted to clarify, just for everybody's knowledge in the room. Rental increases in a market situation are controlled by provincial legislation during the period of tenancy. So while a tenant is in place, there's a maximum allowable rent increase and a whole system that's regulated by the province. At the time of tenant turnover in a market housing situation, the owner can elevate up or down, you know, elevate the increase to market conditions or drop based on market conditions. And they just adjust based on market need and opportunity. In the case of secured housing, not only is there a maximum allowable rent increase during the period of tenancy, but the time of tenant turnover, we do not allow it to adjust simply to whatever market will bear. Instead, there is a specific calculation within the housing agreement that that elevation shall increase at a maximum rate relative to the general metro Vancouver median growth rate. Okay, and that is essentially, we do have, we are going to experience some growth in, you know, median rents across the region, but those do not escalate at the same rate as market rates. Market rates grow much faster than median rents. And so the calculation, although it's not the subject of the public hearing tonight, is an important consideration because what, what we do is we have a housing agreement that secures council's intent in perpetuity so that the applicant, you can be assured that the applicant's offers are secured by agreements and enforced by the district.
Thank you, that's good to know. Ms. Guppy, can I ask you to stay for one more question? And I don't really want to put you on the spot, we just have one more question here from Counselor Mury who asks. Did you want to ask that, Counselor Mury?
Well, I, there's, there's a few more, just the rationale about no left from Marine onto Garden. Are we, are we relooking at that?
What I would suggest, because, I mean, I've been here long enough that I can remember when the community came out wanting to restrict flow through that neighborhood. So what I would suggest is I sit down with the transportation team, try to learn more, and then send that information to John Melner. And if council is interested, I'm happy to talk with council on the findings I come up with.
Well, yeah, I, I would be very interested in knowing, I mean, you know, that was then, this is now. Lots has changed since that restriction, and I was there when we did that as well. But lots has changed in the, in the community, and I think we do need to look at the traffic circulation and not, you know, not, not see if it can be improved. And then my other one is, I noticed on the renderings as well, like, we have an intersection every block on Capilano Road. And like, is, is, do we need that many intersections? Like, it, it just seems that, given what's happened over the last 10, 15 years with traffic, and, you know, we should be looking at reducing the number of intersections. It's not a very long road. The walk from Marine to Garden is not that far. And I'm, I'm not sure why we're not looking more closely at improved circulation to reduce the number of intersections to allow that traffic flow in that corridor to move. It's, it's just one light after another. And, you know, we have, we have the issue with, you know, very highly high volume of tourists in, in certain areas on Capilano Road where a light is continually backing traffic up. And I don't know why we're, you know, following that, that sort of structure. So I, I would like.
Responding to that question.
I'd like engineering, I think council needs to talk to engineering about the flow on Capilano Road and the number of intersections.
Mr. Milver, did you want to?
Thank you, just, just to provide some high-level comment, happy to do that at this time. We can certainly provide that information to council, and we, and we will follow up. In terms of the application, and I heard the commenting question about left-hand turns on Garden or other subsequent intersections, this application isn't anticipated to change those current left-hand turn movements. However, it's a few blocks away. The district owns these lands. The district can adjust the traffic configuration now or into the future in response to future needs. And I think that would be a useful point to raise in the conversation with the engineering team. I understand there's an upcoming workshop from our Transportation Engineering Group to speak about a few specific issues. But we can also ask them to circle back to council about what is the future discussion to occur with the rapid transit connections coming through Marine. TransLink is working on that, that effort, and I understand there will be more information coming back to council in the coming weeks and months. So we will circle back to council, but it's important to note that we retain control over these intersections, and this application does not directly impact whether or not council chooses to have a left-hand turn allowed on Garden in the future. That's, that's up to council's discretion in, in consultation with TransLink, Ministry of Transportation, where they're involved, if it's in close proximity to the highway. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can also just add one brief point that one of the public comments we got was about the, a similar question to the one Counselor Mury just raised. And I can tell you that our transportation team are looking at the signaling, signalization and timing of the signals along that stretch of Capilano as we speak. So there probably will be more information forthcoming.
So they're synchronized, so.
Well, that's the idea, but I think they're also looking at the timing of that signaling, of the, the synchronization to see if they can get better east-west flow at the same time.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. I'd like to return now to speakers and in the, from the public. And we have two new virtual hands for first-time speakers. And first we'll go to Kristin Lehe. She's still on the line, and we have Corey Cost on deck after that.
Hi there, I'm just using my wife's computer here. My name is Matt Plant, P L A N T. I'm a lifelong resident of the North Shore for 44 years, and I'm a member of good standing from the Capilano Rugby Club since 1997. I currently serve on the executive in the role of Vice President. I would like to comment on the proposed new 171-room hotel. As you may or may not know, the Capilano Rugby Club clubhouse and field facilities have become the park of choice for hosting major games in British Columbia. In the past few years, Clohanni Park has been used for a variety of national and provincial representative matches, including the hosting of Canada Sevens traveling teams as well as other international teams. Test sites from Canada, Japan, Georgia, the United States, New Zealand, Hong Kong, and England have all used its grounds and clubhouse for training. So having a hotel within walking distance would be a huge benefit to our programs. We are also thrilled that the plans for this development would be the establishment of new dining options close to the club. Our members would be frequent flyers at that new restaurant in the hotel. As a first responder in the community, I can speak from experience that due to the cost of living and the lack of housing, we are losing first responders at an alarming rate to the Fraser Valley and beyond, even out of province. This is concerning for me as a first responder, if the ever, was there a critical incident or event like an earthquake, our first responders wouldn't be able to attend the North Shore because we would likely have bridge closures. So to up the chances of those first responders remaining on the North Shore, I think this is a huge benefit to make more housing on the North Shore available. I would like to express support for this proposal, which seeks to renew the aging hotel rooms, grow rental housing supply, improve the existing road network by extending Curling Road, and add new neighborhood commercial, including food and beverage retail. These are all welcome improvements to the neighborhood, and I'd like to thank council for allowing me to speak and appreciate the late hour. Thank you.
Thank you very much for calling in at this late hour. We're going online at this late hour, and we have one other online, and that is Corey Cost. Mr. Cost, are you there?
Good evening, Acting Worship Counselor Pope. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening, please go ahead.
It's quite a wild ride in Upper Capilano, probably Lower Capilano as well. Many of us are cut off by power a quarter after eight. I'm now having to switch to emergency backup power because Telus is also down. No emergency calls, no 911 calls are available. So we are interesting times. So my name again is Corey Cost. I've lived here in Edgemont Village for 51 years. And my few points that I would like to just express about this development, not going to say for or against, but I'm going to mention some points. You should really follow the OCP unless it has been revised by a, a public hearing, in other words. We can't keep on time after time adjusting and putting small adjustments which are inconsistent with our existing OCP. There's too many of that. Almost all public hearings need to be adjusting the OCP. It needs to be reviewed. And really, quote, quote, "The building layout is generally in keeping with the concept plan in the Lower Capilano Marine Center Implementation Plan." I think that's, the public might see this another way. It's completely inconsistent. The, the highest nearby. You mean on the North Shore? Apex is 32 stories. There is no, nothing on the shore that is this kind of height. And where are the required shadow studies? It's not good enough to show the ones just for the middle of summer, 21st of, of the, of June. You need proper shadow studies to give some idea of just how much is going to be cast around the neighborhood by this enormously high building. Transportation studies, I haven't seen any transportation studies. It really, this facility does not serve the needs of the local residents, which should be its prime purpose. Schools, nothing about adjusting schools daycare. There's no daycare even on-site anymore. Any requirements to put a date for this occupancy? I urge that this rezoning, if it goes ahead, be revoked if it's not started for, let's say, two years. You have that authority to do that. And I would hate to see it just being, going through a public hearing and approved only to just wait for years and years, as many of the developments have done since 2011. The housing costs in general will go up when you increase density. So realize that, the more you increase density, the higher the costs will be. There's not a word about park space. There should be, for this kind of additional people, let's say 400 people, it should be something like three to four acres of parkland. I don't see any of that that should go along. And the jobs that come with this kind of facility are mostly low-wage jobs. They're not exactly for the engineer type that they're looking for jobs. The FSR going from 3 to 4.4, again, that's a substantial increase above what the, what was allowed as an increase in the OCP. And you really should have the OCP updated first. Do we really need these multi-million dollar residential units? And I can't say how many multiple millions they are as you go to the, near the 30th floor, but they are definitely for the elite and not for even the middle class. Only 77 comments in total for the consultation process? That seems so, so little when thousands responded at the time we went through the OCP. Buses that come down the road, they're full by the time they get to Capilano Road. And the more lights you have that now impede it. I now come, when I come home from, let's say, Stanley Park, there used to be one light, Captain Marine. You know how many there are now? 10, and 11th and 12th are going to be coming up. This is just not a way to have a major transportation route go. So I might have a few more points, but I, I'll see to the next speaker. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Cost. That seems to be the end of the first-time speakers, but I will ask one last time, are there any other first-time speakers? Online or in the room? Any other first-time speakers? Then I will move to the second. Any other second-time speakers in the room? Zoom participants? No one online, no one on phone. Is anyone wishing to speak a third time?
Wait a minute, I have to put my hands up. How do you do that?
All right, Mr. Cost, please just go ahead.
Ah, okay, good. Can you hear me still?
Yes.
Okay. So there are just a few comments. What I was told, of course, it does for non-market rental rates. That's been published in the report. But there's nothing there to indicate what sort of market rates are going to be charged. I think it'd be useful, council and the public, to know. I noticed that the, there are subsidized units, but if I heard correctly, only for those who have a female as the, that leads the families. And that seems discriminatory on the basic fundamental process that we should not discriminate between whether the leader of the family is a male or a female. The Curling Road extension will decrease the capacity, in my opinion, of Capilano Road because, just because there's more waste waiting at, at the various lights. The synchronization has been attempted for years. And if you sat, watched Captain Marine, at many times, no cars are going through the intersection. They're waiting for the light to cycle through, no matter, there's no smart about it. Like, there's nobody at, at this, at the cycle point in a certain directions. That should be passed over to give the next notch, as it were, access to the intersection. The intersection is so bad, I would say 30 to 40% of the time, there's nobody going through the intersections at Captain Marine. there's nobody going through the intersections at Captain Marine. So in other words, Captain Marine has a low efficiency. What, I urge council to look at places like Singapore. It has density, but very affordable, cheap housing for its citizens. If they can do it, why can't we? Anyway, a few things to chew on, and I hope that council will consider them before making a decision on this matter. And I also urge that this meeting not be closed because there are many like myself, I'm just holding a flashlight in a room here to try and read some notes because the power is out in this very critical area that it would be impacted by the decision that council could make on this development. And I think it's unfair not to have people sitting in the dark, not being able to communicate with you their concerns or their wishes for this development. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Cost. Well, that seems to be wrapping up for a second. Is there anyone who wants to speak, anyone else who wants to speak a third time? All right, I I will advise that it needs to be something that has not been discussed at all tonight so far and that you are bringing new information to your comments. Can you come down to the mic then, please?
Sorry, it's David Cameron again. I just wanted to see if there was a formal comment on road access to Maguire and or as well parking on the street after, if there could be a formal comment on that or an understanding of when we would get clarity on this. Thank you.
Okay, if you want to leave your contact, if your contact information for staff, and then we'll get, we'll try and get those answers for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Acting Mayor, I would just, I would just request that that question be answered as part of the report coming back in regards to traffic circulation and parking.
Okay, that sounds fine. So I'm not seeing any other speakers in the room or online. I conclude that there are no further speakers. Clerk, I believe we have exhausted the list. Would you agree with that? All right, if there are no further questions from council, then I would ask for a motion, counsel. Counselor Back? Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have a question, Counselor Forbes? It didn't.
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Well, it's not a question, I just wanted to make a comment that I have been going in and out in with my connection in Lynn Valley to the halls. So there could be people also in this area that aren't able to respond or get online tonight. So I think, I really think that's a good point that we need to make sure that everybody who wanted to contact us was able to, and with the power problems tonight, I'd just like to have that taken into consideration.
Okay, thank you for mentioning that, and I believe the clerk is going to address that question.
Yes, thank you through your chair, or thank you through the chair. Subject to the Local Government Act, we feel as though we have made a reason, we've afforded all those with an interest in the bylaws and property a reasonable opportunity to be heard or present or present written submissions from the time notice was sent out to the conclusion of the public hearing. So we feel that we have afforded the opportunity for submissions at this time.
Very much for that clarification. So back to Counselor Back, who I believe was going to call the motion.
So open it up, because I, look, look in here.
All right.
Acting Mayor Pope, I would move that the public hearing be closed and that this matter be referred back to a regular meeting of council.
And a secondary, seconded by Counselor Hanson, all in favor? That this be moved, closed? Call the question, all in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
Through Acting Mayor Pope, do we know when this would potentially return to council in a regular meeting?
Thank you through the chair. We would be targeting December ninth to have this returned for second and third. However, it will just depend on staff's ability to complete the report. I would also just mention that no further submissions can be submitted by the public at this point in time. The public hearing has been closed.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.